Can you smile for everybody? Thank you.
The veterinary science portion of the Ag Pathway is so important for students who are interested in veterinary science as a career and even the animal industry and other aspects of it, because it gives them opportunities to develop skills. So these skills are preparing them, things that they would typically learn their first or second year of college, or then the first few years of working in the industry they're getting in high school. And further than that, it's also building their network of people in the animal science industry, gives them the recommendations that they'll need, connections that will put them in places that propel them forward in their future.
Do you want me to draw both of them?
Get all three of them into one container.
I am thrilled to be a partner with the District 214 Veterinary Career Pathways Program. The whole goal of this pathway program is to help students develop careers that are really important and that matter. We have had some wonderful students and Gabby has been with us for the past several months, learning different techniques and protocols within our facility.
Good boy.
Done.
I'm really happy to be a part of this pathway and for this internship to open up to me. And even when you're working here or working at other clinics, you may even gain network. So they're actually hiring me this summer, so that's very exciting and I hope that other students can experience this as well.
What is really cool about these programs is these are all hours that students can put towards their veterinary school applications. Most veterinary schools require at least 600 hours of veterinary experience and most people get them in college, but our students are getting them now in high school. Of our students, three were offered positions after the experience ended and we're excited to see where those go.
Oh, you're cute. You're really cute.
Hi. Let's visit. Hello.
Our principal, Eileen Hart, had a dream that agriculture would come to Rolling Meadows and District 214 and basically told us to dream and then she gave us the things that we needed to build those dreams.
Sometimes you start with a dream and you don't know really where it's going to go. I think what I'm most pleased about is with the great enthusiasm of our teachers, but also our students. The students drove this change. If they didn't fall in love with veterinary science class one, we wouldn't have had a second one or to get to Vet Tech. And so now the students have this wonderful opportunity to take these vet classes and now they're actually out in the field in internships, hearing from veterinary science teachers, MDs themselves. And now to hear some of these seniors talk about wanting to be a veterinarian themselves. So I love that they have these really once-in-a-lifetime opportunities that you just don't see at most high schools across the country.
I was a veterinarian from a young age. I really wanted to work with animals, especially with horses. And taking the classes have really helped me a lot and I've been going to a lot of competitions. I actually got to be able to go to state for vet science. So yeah, it's pretty cool for me and I really enjoy doing it.
It's really awesome being here today and my favorite part is being here and being with Cupcake and Mr. Wright, my favorite teacher.
Thanks Leo.
I am most proud of the growth that I see from these students. As an agriculture teacher, I have the blessing to have students from freshmen all the way until they graduate, to see these seedlings of a dream, these teeny tiny little thoughts that they could be this. And then watching them grow and develop those skill sets is, it's a beautiful process. And as we graduate this first capstone group, it's just been a phenomenal vision and just watching all of these dreams come to life. And I look forward to seeing where it goes in the future.
Can you smile? Oh, good funny face and shake. Oh, good and give me a kiss. Oh, thank you. That's a good boy.
I'm Shira Tavlin and I'm having an internship here at Chief for a Pile. Like as long as they can't break my bones or like bite me with venom, I'm not that scared of them. It's been pretty fun coming here with all the different animals here, basically like a mini zoo. It's kind of my happy place, so I always enjoy coming here. Mo Apachini here is probably my favorite lizard. He's a very good boy and has bright yellow eyes. He's a Solomon Island monkey-tailed skink and I naturally love skink lizards. They have like very large bellies and little, well, tiny arms and I find it very adorable.
When Shira first came in, she did 30 hours. So she was here for us for a couple of weeks. She did anything simple from I was cleaning the enclosure's glass to just simply taking care of the animal, taking them out, spending time with them. I know that she loved Maggie, one of our bull pythons. I know she likes Apachini, our monkey-tailed skink, Leo, our iguana. So she also did some countings with the bugs. She counted some mealworms. That's really big help for us because if it's not there, it won't sell. So her helping out and putting it out meant a lot to us and helping, just behind the scenes stuff, really helping to put everything out for the customers.
The interactions with the customers, a lot of these people are getting a reptile or an animal for the first time in their life, especially children. They're never going to forget this moment. It's very important for them to be a part of, even share it. She was involved in some of these family purchases for the animal and all the stuff that comes in it and they're never going to forget this. This little child that's seven or eight years old, this is the time that they're never going to forget the day they went to the store and they interacted with these animals and their parents allowed them to get one of them.
I really like coming here because of the large variety of animals here. I'm really hoping to get a job in the herpetology, which is the study of reptiles and amphibians. I always believed that you should have a job that you really enjoy. So I'm hoping I'll be able to get a job within some area of animals with hopefully it being herpetology.
The reason why we're here this morning is to celebrate an accomplishment that everyone in this room has achieved.
So this morning we celebrated being recognized as a national blue ribbon school for 2023. This is an award that is given by the U.S. Department of Education. There were 20 winners in the state of Illinois, but only four high schools. So it's something that we're very proud of. I think it speaks to the collective work of everyone who works in our building, from our teaching staff, our support staff, our custodial staff, to make this place a really, really excellent place to work and learn.
All right, so here we are, beginning of the school year at the pack house. All right, we got a lot of stuff going on. Over the summer, what we had, we had a company come in, tear down the existing garage. They report the new foundation for it so that our students have something nice and fresh to build on for the start of the year. So our first project for the school year is building two-car plus extra detached garage for the pack house.
Pinky becomes trigger finger and then he pulled the gun upside down supporting underneath.
One of the things that we have going on with the class is that we have a lot of different ability levels in class. So we have some students that have been working in the construction trades, whether it be as an electrician, you know, some plumbing work or framing work, where some other students, this is the very first time that they're touching a power tool. We also went over a lot of tool safety stuff in the first initial weeks of school and now we're applying it to tools that we're using on the job site. And what's great about what's happening here is that we have some students that are very new to the tools. We have some that are experienced. We have the experienced ones also helping out the beginners in the class. So it's a really great like student-to-student peer mentoring situation happening here too. And what you see behind me is what the last class just finished building and put up. All right, just watch out if we have any bits and nails. You don't want to grab it and shove it. Okay. And so we're off to a really good start for the school year.
Three, lift. Got to line up the holes. Is that good? You got it then? All right.
Beautiful.
Yes!
Being a band director is one of the best jobs you can have. I get to work with students for four years and develop amazing relationships and watch them grow, which is really unique compared to other teachers during the school day. And especially being a band director in District 214, which has a long and storied tradition of amazing and nationally recognized band programs. It was just an unbelievable surprise this summer when I found out that my brother Elliot was going to start working in District 214 also.
Here's the same chunk everybody.
Growing up, obviously my family is very, very musical and I should say our family. Both my parents are actually music teachers. Our dad was also our band director. So like talk about a wild world. We were going to all the band events, all the things. My mom was a music ed professor at the university and that was a huge part of our lives.
When we were growing up, I of course didn't want anything to do with music and I didn't start playing any kind of organized music until I was in high school. And that's when I joined high school band and I did it because I was forced to. My parents made me do band my freshman year. That was the deal and then I was allowed to quit after that.
We were forced to take piano lessons as kids and I think that's one of those things that growing up, being forced to do things and your parents are doing it, of course you're going to rebel.
Same time, I look back and I think about all the games my parents would play in the car or now I look back and it's like, oh, my dad was quizzing me on like Mozart versus Beethoven when I was eight on the radio, just trying to get me to figure it out and I had no idea. That was just a game we played in the car.
They always wanted us to be like, you should be an engineer, like that's what you should do. So the fact that both Spencer and I ended up doing music and doing band and being in the same district is like serendipity. I don't, I like, it just, I couldn't have imagined, like that was like a dream in some world, but it's just so cool that it happened to work out and that's where our paths took us. Growing up, I think Spencer and I like, we've been really close. I think there were, you know, I have an older brother, we have an older brother, Andrew. I think it's one of those things, we always looked up to one another. So I always looked up to Andrew. I tried to fill in his shoes. Spencer tried to fill in mine, at least I'd like to think so. You know, growing up and becoming adults and going to music together, I think our relationship has become more of like best friends, right?
Elliot and I are each other's biggest cheerleaders. Band and music isn't about winning. If you could win, I don't think Miles Davis played the trumpet and said, I want to win playing trumpet. Making music an art is just about making art and doing it with other people. And so Elliot and I, we always just want to help each other do that the best that we can.
As a band director, like we, as a teacher, we are in the people business, right? We are helping produce the best humans that we can. It's helping them learn how to work really hard and become the best that they can be and fulfill their potential while they're here.
I think it's fascinating seeing our folks, because I think for them, it's the same kind of shell shock. Both of our kids landed in this amazing high school district. I think for them, it's, it's almost like a new chapter of that we're just always going to be able to support each other and we're going to be next to each other and help each other do everything. So I think it's all, I know my parents were pretty emotional when it happens, just in like a, this feels like a dream sometimes that this is happening.
Something EU chose you in the winner's time. And guess what? You will never lose this one, but you keep a winner's mind.
Today is, every day is Black History at BG. It's a celebration of our black students. February is Black History Month, but for black people, it's just an anniversary for us because every day is Black History. Today is all about black joy. We started with a poet, Mo Entum, a spoken word poet. We have Ernest Crem III, you know, Black History saved his life, Black History Teacher of the Year.
What will your spirit represent when somebody says your name in 100 years, y'all?
It's important for kids to hear these messages to uplift them, to empower them, to make them feel good about themselves.
I really love the, all the speakers, especially the poetry. I think it's important to have people come in and connect with people through different things like poetry or the presentation that Mr. Crem did. I think it's really important that we get to see different people's perspectives.
Momentum, hearing him speak made me feel powerful, you know, because myself, it feels like times where I feel like giving up because I rap, I do content and I have people that criticize me about my content. And hearing him just gave me motivation to keep going. It gives me that drive to keep going and make more music and content for people that support me.
The purpose of this event is to uplift every black student in District 214. We have breakout rooms for students. They'll be able to play Black History games. We have black art. We have a black entrepreneur session. And then we have a rap and poetry session for our students who are into spoken word, hip hop and rap. So it's a day filled of black joy. Every day is Black History. February just has to be our anniversary.
We're very excited today that we're hosting the Northwest Community Healthcare Dental Van. They've done cleanings, they take x-rays, they do fillings, so for cavities. They've also done outside referrals to organizations that would be able to help our students and do it free of charge. Yeah, we're so excited because we know that there's various barriers to seeing dental or healthcare professionals. So the fact that this is right outside the school, students are able to walk right outside, get the services they need, then walk back in, just makes it more efficient and easy for the student to get seen. So we're hoping that this service is offered at all of our schools here in District 214. We currently have the van here at the specialized schools once a month and we're hoping to expand that so all the students here in the district are able to be seen.
If you do join us to be a part of the tour, you're certainly welcome to do so. If you don't wish to join us, you're welcome to also just hang here until we come back. We anticipate the tour concluding just after 7:00.
So they have the dockable list. We can see it.
Seven twenty eight. Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're back from our tour of the specialized school. Sorry we took so long. So now, um, we're back from our tour and we're at the portion of the meeting for public comments and I had one person sign up. The Board of Education and District Valued Comments from the community at our meetings as well as emails, we appreciate everyone appearing for the board and treat all with courtesy and respect. The Board of Education asks each person to limit all their comments to three minutes. However, if several people want to address the board on some of our topics, the board president may limit the time to two minutes per person. The public comments at gen item will be the only time the Board of Education will hear public comments during meetings. All comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools. Comments will not be allowed identifying the individual students or staff members. As this is the Board of Education business meeting, the board practice is not to respond to public questions or comments at this time because this is not an open-ended forum. However, we do listen carefully. If a question or written response will be provided, if you wish a written response, please ensure that Ms. Keys has your full name and address on the sign-up sheet. To be fair and consistent, while addressing the board, the state's protocols and procedures must be in place for everyone. The green light indicates your time has started. It's on the podium. The yellow light indicates three seconds and the red light indicates three minutes have expired. So the person, let's see, Mr. Art Ellingson, if you want to come forward to the microphone and just put your state your name for the minutes. Thank you. Alex Reed, sir.
Good evening. My name is Hart Ellingson. I live in Arlington Heights. My children are all graduates of District 214 High School. My grandchildren, when they get older, have to attend District 214 High School. I sent an email to a couple of people in the Keys who forwarded to the schools who attend the president about having longer presentation to talk about the Holocaust. Illinois law requires schools to teach the Holocaust, but in my experience with my children, it's not being done. A mini-series came out in nineteen eighty-three called Winds of War that documented the lead-up to World War Two, based on a novel written by Herman Woke, who was a Jewish naval officer. After he wrote the Winds of War, he wrote a second novel, which is in two volumes, that thick, called War and Remembrance. In nineteen eighty-three, War, Winds of War, was turned into a seven-part TV mini-series. The total length is seven episodes. They're on DVD today, but the DVDs are impossible to get because they're out of print. I don't know if you say out of print for a DVD, but you can't get them. But they do have a set at Arlington Heights Library. Again, the War of Remembrance DVDs, this is two different sets, totally twelve movies, roughly two and a half hours long each, documenting World War Two, including the Holocaust. It's the best history of World War Two I've ever seen. The whole list is about fifty hours in length. When a teacher teaches World War Two, the kids tune out because it's boring to them, but this movie series makes it alive. When the kids were not being taught World War Two history, when my kids were at South Middle School, I had these DVDs, but at that time I had VHS recordings that I recorded off TV a few years earlier. And I showed them to my kids and my, the friends of my children, and they watched this with app raptured. Yeah, can we come back tomorrow night to watch the next episode? I had a bunch of the kids, they were just thrilled with this. This stuff is the best stuff I've seen about World War Two. Some of these episodes go into what's going on in Europe, some, you know, one episode is the Battle of Midway, for example. But they show the Holocaust in vivid detail, even better than Schindler's List. And I hope Schindler's List is also on the list. They don't show it in class, they always tell the kids, "Go home and watch Schindler's List on TV." History will be repeated if we don't remember what happened in the past. And I've asked permission to show commercials. I've got five and a half minutes of television commercials, uncopyrighted, that I wanted to show today at this meeting. And I was told because they're copyrighted, you can't show it. And we didn't vet it first, so we can't let you show it unless we vet it. Well, information was available for you to see if you wanted to, but you decided before you looked at it. So I'm asking that you look at this stuff and you consider showing, let me show these five minutes to the room at the next meeting, so you can see what it's like. Now, these guys over here, your techs are first, I've given them the link, I've uploaded this video to YouTube.
Thank you, Mr. Ellingson.
So if you want to see it.
Thank you.
They'll send you an email, so you can see the link later. Thank you.
No one else has signed up, so we'll go to the next agenda item, which is workshop topic six point one is master facilities plan. Mr. Uli?
Hello, everyone. Before we jump into the presentation itself, I wanted to just provide a brief overview of kind of how the last ten or so months have gone. This has been a working exercise for approximately ten months that was initiated around this time last fall. The intent of this facility assessment is to provide accurate data and information to drive our decision-making moving forward. Additionally, we've had some significant leadership changes, so this was our opportunity to kind of call a timeout and just get photographs on our facilities as a whole. This was a very comprehensive process that involved a lot of people, which we will talk about, and it analyzed every component of our buildings and our campuses. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to provide the board a high-level overview of the process and the findings. If we went through every detail, this is the book, we'd have to order breakfast and lunch. So this is the comprehensive plan here. So we'll leave time at the end for plenty of questions, and I'd like to just quickly introduce George Demirakis, principal at Archon, and proud alum of?
Percy.
Percy High School. And then Mike Sauer, senior associate, proud alum of?
Prospect.
Prospect. So it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Mike and George and their entire team through this process. So I'm going to turn this over now to George.
I know you said it was a ten-month process, but how did you get there? I mean, why did you get there? I think you should give a little bit more background on that. Why did you decide to embark on this plan?
So we're going to cover all of this. We'll go through the entire process from step one, but the reality was when we, we kind of entered into this space roughly a year ago, we didn't feel like we had enough information to make informed decisions moving forward. So we're currently in year three of that five-year capital improvement plan, but obviously we had to start planning beyond that. So we felt like in that moment, we needed much more information and data.
I'm just going to add, I think what Mr. Uli and I have talked about in some of our planning meetings, the five-year plan that the district is currently working through did not take into consideration the level of detail that you're going to see tonight. So a lot of those were maybe perceptual and qualitative of what we think we need to do. When you see this presentation in a level of detail, you understand the number at the end and how serious our work is because of the level of depth that they might. So to put short answer to your question, the five-year plan that we're currently living in is not in-depth enough to cover what the district truly needs. This is our nightstand material. I'm going to go to bed. Thank you, Chris, and thank you, George, for letting us be here tonight to be able to present this update that we have on our progress plan. Really, in a nutshell, before anything gets started, if you kind of could go to your question that you started with, about twenty years ago, if you look at things, the way schools, the last school just became very reactive with things that were coming, right? Things would come, you'd build stuff and grow. The projects that would come to the table were based on alarm or based on current needs that would come, and then you would try to create. What's really successful of doing, going through a process like this, it becomes a process of looking comprehensively at all your facilities and we are proactively looking at them to help project out the next ten years of the year. So you set yourself up with that success. We're looking at all your existing building components. We're looking at, we're actually communicating with your B and G and your APs to understand the need that they have and really putting all those pieces of puzzle together into one large document that is a living and breathing document. We're not going to sit here and say when this is done, we nailed it on the part and you have all the answers and tests. No. This booklet will be something, a tool that will be able to use dearly to understand the type of projects that will come. So let's get started. Your ceilings, your lights, your toilets. It's not looking at the curriculum side of things, of how we're trying to educate children, how are we trying to create more opportunities in curriculum. It's really about looking at your existing assets and making sure that we are maintaining them and looking for to keep them going for as long as possible, right? And making sure that we address those needs before those pieces pile up. We're looking at parking lots, we're looking at fields. So that was the challenge. So as we took that challenge on, we asked three questions. We said, what are we trying to analyze? Goal one was to look at the existing conditions of each component, their estimated life cycle, and help project out when you would probably need to replace them, or at least start looking at them, right? Two, looking at all your life safety items and see where, how those rank in a prioritized, budgeted, and embedded into this facility plan. And then three, we still want to make sure we are cognizant of elements that were already established in your five-year strategic plan. We want to make sure we met with staff to understand some components of things that want to get done educationally that get looked into this. So therefore, it becomes a very big outlook of everything that involves. So the outcome, the outcome is this big book that we're seeing here, right? That, it's really creating that comprehensive study that looks at all 214 buildings and helps project out at least the next ten years. Some school districts ask us to project out twenty years, that's very crystal ball. I tell them, it's nice to know, but it's hard to project that far out. What's good is every component not here that's listed, some pieces are meant to be touched in fifteen or twenty years, but they're there. They're just on that list, so you have them, right? And so ten years is probably the most we'd ever want to project out. And then as you get closer to that typically, you keep revisiting that budget to make sure that you are still on it. Now, how do we do it? So understanding the task we have, we wanted to make sure we got the right team on board. And really, it was important for us to look at the proper engineers and proper people that they have a really deep history with the district, that have worked here for many years, that understand your buildings. And we are the experts in the fields that they are in, right? We all love something, right? I love architecture. I love the additions and renovations and understanding how schools learn. That's my piece. But we wanted to make sure everyone else that was in our group had their, that same desire and that same expertise. So if you look at us, Archon Associates, we are a K through twelve architecture firm that's special. We're an architecture firm that specializes in pre-K through twelve buildings. That's been our bread and butter since nineteen seventy-nine, before me, but it started with that, right? But that's all we do. On the architectural side, we are the ones looking at all the interior finishes of one of your spaces, all your sites, all your parking lots, your stadiums, and we're also kind of the reinighters. We're the shepherds that help funneling everyone to make sure they understand what they needed to do and how to have organized. We brought in CS2 Design Group as the MEP engineers, and they've had a long history here at the district, and their specialty is mechanical electrical plumbing and fire protection. So their sole focus was to look at all your mechanical equipment, all your electrical, your service companies buildings, your lighting throughout your buildings, how your power is utilized throughout your buildings, that was their specialty. And then plumbing, looking at fire protection, making sure how is plumbing ready through your, every bathroom facility, through the corridors, pretty much understanding those systems. Inspect specializes in building envelope. I always tell people, they're the ones that want to make sure your buildings aren't leakers. They focus on your vertical and your horizontal surfaces. So the vertical, they looked at all the walls and the windows to understand, making sure that we are in good shape, to make sure your building is watertight. And everyone's looking at your roofs, everything else on the top. And lastly, we wanted to make sure that it's one thing to identify all these items, and that's half our job. The other half is making sure we come to the table from you as a district to understand what things cost, what things should cost, and how you could achieve doing that over time. And the best way of doing that is getting a construction manager on board, and we use Pepper Construction for their expertise, they have their history here. They've also had a deep knowledge base in school construction. So as we brought them on board, they looked at the items that we find, helped budget accordingly, used current market values, they've used what construction was going on this past summer, what, where footage comes from. They're the ones that get deep dive into what things should cost, and then they're the ones that will be, we'll be using as we go forward to see what's achievable in summers, what makes sense that we can tap over the next ten years, right? So you put all those rest pieces together, and that gives you the team. So a process, like in your presentation, by the way, as I'm talking up here, everything is about to use, if I could look down at any other screen they want, or at me. But as far as our process is concerned, I look at it as five steps, right? First, there's the discovery phase, and that discovery phase really, kind of tried to color code it, is really the initiation that you were talking through about getting us on board and starting to investigate all your buildings. So what did that mean? In the winter, we started walking all your sites, walking, pop our heads above ceilings, looking at every single component, which took many, many months. I mean, it was a task to get through all of your facilities and looking at everything and making sure we understood what those conditions are. We used that time in that discovery process to have meetings with your B and G people. It's interesting. Seeing, getting eyes on a piece of equipment is one piece, but that might tell us half the story. The other half is understanding what's giving you problems. And the guys that know that, it's a lot of your building problems, right? We might look at a component that's five years old that should be great, another component that's twenty years old that's telling us, based on numbers, that should be trouble. But that twenty-year-old unit might be doing great for you, could be maintaining, and that five-year-old, that five-year-old unit might be the dead. The only way we know that is once we talk with them, because they have that insight, right? So we met with them, we met with your associate principals, really to kind of figure out and data collect. Once we collected all that data, we started analyzing. And really, that level is us back at house, starting to document all the issues that we found, all the types of components, and really making it digestible for us and for everyone to know what we were finding. You know, we sit in a room, we love what we do, and we talk the talk, and we do it, but we want to make sure that whatever we find is easy to understand and to send it out to people, out to everyone else to be able to read and comprehend. So that analysis was really us looking at all those components. Documentation was helping organize all the information into a format that is easy Documentation was helping organize all the information into a format that is easy to follow and is really, and helped create that document you're seeing now here. And what we're at now was the budgeting piece. So like any process, and I know I'm not here to try to scare you when you finally see this number and you get there. It really is more of a, we have to start somewhere. We want to make sure we have that net, that we trap everything on that list, and we see everything that's there and budget it all. The next step, and the budgeting step, is start to funnel through to see what is achievable over the next ten years, what needs to happen, how to prioritize. So we are at that level of coming to your meeting tonight. We're showing that we're at the budgeting stage. The next steps will be helping try to prioritize and kind of plan together that will make sense, okay? As I mentioned, and what we're doing, we started back in winter with the process, with our initial meetings, that kind of springboard it did to spring. I kind of touch a piece every day, I've kind of went through the slide before. So really, in a nutshell, it's been, the process has been ongoing. A lot of the time, it's about data gathering. And this summer, it was finally that fruition of getting all that information together to help budget and create that comprehensive public. After we exit out of fall, we'll see what our next steps will be going down more forward. Speaking of those next steps, tonight is the yellow. Tonight is our Fall 2023 presentation to the board of the types of things that we found and the types of numbers that we received. Our, once we get back, as we exit this, our next steps will be to start refining all those budgets, all those identified items, starting funneling through the important ones that are telling us that you might need to do earlier, sooner rather than later. Then analyzing what buildings make sense if you try to look at economies of schedule and try to get things done in certain summers. And help come back to the tidbit in the winter slash spring of twenty-four with a much clearer plan of action that is telling you guys what that outlook will look like, okay? So there's still a lot more behind us. It looks like there's only two steps left, but those are the two most important pieces that we try to keep going forward. But now let's dive into what this chart and what this information is starting looking like. I'm not going to go too deep into the step, but I'm going to start to take a picture at thirty thousand foot level of kind of how we organize things, and then get deeper dive, and then start telling you the types of items that were identified in each one. And really, in the organization, we look at the summary slide as really the snapshot for all your buildings. So that first page really gives you a quick glance of every school building, all the types of things that we've identified, and really the costs associated to it. So for this example that you're seeing in front of you, we have Buffalo Grove High School. We have these categories that seem like the most clear way of understanding things. We have site, and that's focused on everything outside of your buildings. Architectural, with all your interior finishes that I always mentioned before, all your flooring, all your walls, all your paint schedules, all your classrooms, things that need to be renovated, all your ceiling works. That's really architectural finishes. Building envelope, we grew them into two different ways. And I mentioned we had that vertical and that horizontal surface. So we have everything tied to all your walls and your roofs as a category, and we tie all your roofs as a category. Plumbing, fire protection, mechanical electrical, pre-sophomore explanatory. And each one of those categories is broken out, so it's pretty clear at the summary level. The base costs really are looking at today's costs. So as we tally up everything we found, this summary page tells you what everything we found in site in each category is on here. And when I say base cost, because people always ask this question, is what's included in that base cost? I always like saying things for all data numbers. Before, it used to be, here's construction cost, and then there's all these other soft costs added to it. That gives you only a snapshot of the picture. And really, if you're only looking at that, you're forgetting those other pieces, and that gets you in trouble when you're trying to budget accordingly, right? So when we put these numbers together, we always want to make sure we have those all in cost so that you feel comfortable proving a type of project that's on there and the cost associated to it, and you know there's nothing really above and beyond. So what's in there? The cost of construction for the item that we identified. You put a ten percent design contingency in there. People always wonder, what is that? What's a design contingency? And historical lessons have led us lead to this. And what we put in there, I always call those, that's the scope creep right now. That is, you tell me you want to renovate two classrooms. When a tech comes and we start designing it, that two classrooms somehow meets the corridor or some other area that you want to touch because it makes sense. It's that we know those types of things happen in the design process. We want to make sure we account for it and have that precaution in here, right? And that's typical. You start renovating toilet rooms, and you know that there's going to be some surprises that are happening behind it. There might be some environmental pieces that happen behind it. We want to make sure we bag those types of things in here. Then we look at another contingency we put in there is a construction contingency. So we know that in the summer construction, based on renovation, there usually is an amount that we want to make sure we safeguarded in there at this early stage. If it's new addition, usually it's less. But we want to put that in there so we understand that those dollars, there's an assignment of dollars in there. And really, you don't want to have to use it, but at least we have it there from a conservative aspect. And then the last piece of the puzzle we try to throw in there is either FF me if it pertains to the item, which is furniture, or fees. So any other fees from village permitting fees to your architectural fees, your construction manager fees, those all get baked into that same number. So when you see it all in number, you see one number. If you ask what's in it, now you know everything that's in there, right? And then once you get beyond that base cost, and this is the reason why it's kind of filtered away, it's because the goal tonight is to focus on the ten-year plan. You don't know that, it's more to focus on the year one cost. But at the end of this process, twenty twenty-four through twenty thirty-four, we'll get filtered in what types of projects that make sense that we bring to the table that say, here's dollars assigned to years that potentially make that we work. We do put escalation in all those. So every year, there's a five percent escalation that goes embedded in there so that we're trying to plan for the surprises down the road, okay? I say a lot, and I say a lot quickly, so I apologize if I say things a little too much. And as you get to the more detailed side of things, so we start big picture. And every school has that breakdown I showed you. If you were to look at a snapshot of the items themselves, the way that we organize things, and this is where it gets a lot deeper, is really, in a school-by-school basis, each one of those categories, in this case, it's showing the snapshot of architectural, has a targeted letter on the left, that A1, A2, Z3, that last keeps going. And if you notice, there's color associated to them because we identify colors with either life safety items, life cycle costs, system, material upgrades, or if it's an owner request item, we're looking through things that might be a nice name, right? So that color coding process is one of the first triggers that helps us in the prioritization as we go forward and we start looking at the types of projects that might make sense. Next, it goes to the location. That's really identifying where it is in the building. The issue itself is what we found. The recommendation is how to solve it. The comments that we might have is kind of notes towards it. And then our units of measure, it's either square footage, linear footage, quantities, you name it. And then our base prices. So all those components are embedded in here. And the reason we have that all in there is because if we look back at this five years from now, seven years from now, ten years from now, we might not all be in the same room looking at the same thing. We want to make sure it's easy for anyone to be able to open this book and understand where it is. The piece of the puzzle that's not shown is the plans. The plans behind this are also tagged with the same letters and same color coding on them. So an A1, if you look at a floor plan, you know exactly where that is and how many of those are. An A2 is there too. So it really makes it, it's a belt and suspenders approach that makes it really nice and easy to follow. And that's kind of how we design the overall assessment. So what we found. Now I'm going to jump dive into kind of a snapshot of each one of these categories of the types of things that we were looking at. So as I mentioned, what the main categories were, site, architectural, the building envelope, and then the MEP set. To help make it readable, here's kind of how we started looking at things. The items on the left are kind of the main big picture items that we were finding in each one of these categories. So if you're looking at sites, we are analyzing your existing parking lots and concrete walks, conditions of them, the ideas of when you need a seal coat, when you need a crack fill and repair, when you need to grind it down and actually replace, understanding those conditions and helping judge it out. Looking at your concrete walks throughout your sites. Looking at your athletic fields, your bleachers that are out there. Your running track, field improvements, fields, these include the baseballs, softball fields, or retention basins in other sites. Your press boxes, exterior lighting was a big one that we wanted to make sure we understood and had assigned them to. Fencing, your tennis courts, your concessions, I know some of them have been redone recently, but some of them have air differentages through. We want to make sure those are on there, your storage facilities around the property, and really wayfinding, if you look at like Buffalo Grove, trying to figure out how to proceed through the site, how do we put signage that directs traffic. Those are the main categories. If you look on the right, we wanted to make it easily digestible for everyone to say, here go your schools, and here's kind of the conditions we were finding them in. And I know it looks red, it looks, oh my God, it's an alarm. Nothing we have on any of our sites, I always want to say, is in alarm mode that we're going to do. We have time to create plans and decks. Really, what these three signifiers are kind of telling us is, the greatest harm that's in breaking, you're in good shape. Yellow is telling us that it's either a few years beyond its life cycle or it's going to be approaching its life cycle over the next few years. So it's yellow, it's one of those things that we want to monitor and make sure it's on our radar if there's things that we want to address. And red is one of those that are older in condition that is trying to tell us that you might want to tackle it earlier, right? So that kind of gives you a snapshot of how those are categorized. And at the bottom, it was, it's really telling you that budget cost I told you, for this category, for each one of these buildings, is identified under each one of those tabs. And it kind of shows you how much of each building, and then a comprehensive look, outlook at site conditions, okay? Follow?
Got a question.
Yes?
So just looking at this, prospect is at forty million, right? Am I reading this right? But it's less red than the others.
Yes, so the trigger point, the reason I'm saying this is, the dollar sign is a hundred percent associated to the need. The doubt, when we're looking at this in the beginning, we're looking at comprehensive, we're identifying everything on that list. So there's forty million dollars of prospect, but doesn't mean that's forty million that isn't happening in ten years. We're just making sure we're identifying everything, that nothing falls over the table or under the wayside. The next step's looking at the things that need to happen sooner rather than later. And I'll tell you, at the end of this, in that ten years, there might be a few hundred million dollars of items that we say are, might be necessary. And there might be a lot more that's down the road that beyond the ten years. Doesn't mean that in the next ten years, you have to spend these dollars. So really, this nutshell is really just showing you everything.
Okay, that's good, because I don't think you have all these dollars.
You're correct. And that's going to be the same for every list. And the reason is, I always tell people, you got to start somewhere. If you start here, you're going to be a little, if you start everywhere, things are going to shake out and funnel down. And understanding the big picture, you'll be able to capture more of the meaning rather than lack. It also helps us, it helps identify as we go forward. Part of the intricacies that we'll have to kind of play with is equity between buildings and making sure that the facilities and the types of projects that are happening in every building, it kind of aligns with timelines, when they can happen, when they should happen, and really how we develop it. So putting everything on the table now, it's going to, by the end of this, you'll see a big number. But that big number doesn't really mean you need to do it all. That big number is just there to make sure we have.
Just a little question. So the colors are based on life cycle of the equipment or the placement and not necessarily safety or anything on this chart?
Correct. It's a mixture of age and safety. So a lot of things, you'll notice, and your mechanical systems, there's some pieces that are thirty, forty years old that are just telling us that you want to replace. Doesn't mean that it's in bad shape, it just means it's at that age. And a lot of these, when you start triggering, and the tool, the niceness of this tool is the fact that when they go through it, you put things to a year that's how it needs to be on your radar. When that year comes, you look at it again, and you say, all right, you know what? It is a thirty-year track, but it's way better condition, they are checking, we can keep it going. Or that's the types of conversation that will happen. It's more of, we want to trigger these to make sure they're on your radar. The life cycle items really mostly pertain to, if you were to look at your sites, it would be more of a trick hazards, things that are crumbling and declining, any steps, precautions that would be hazardous, like going to put out. None of that stuff is really here. So I wouldn't say the items that are hidden at that level. This is more strictly, as far as these are, it's more age.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that one? So this is just based on age? It's not based on anything that you guys looked at?
Well, it's a mixture. So it's everything we looked at as well as age.
Okay, so it's a combination. So you looked at this stuff, and you also, because age doesn't really, it could mean that it's, you know, dilapidated because it's forty years old, but it could also be in great shape even at forty years old.
Correct.
Okay.
It's like I had a water heater that lasted twenty years, and they replaced it. Five years later, it was, it went out. And I was like, wow. And they always say that they don't make things that they used to, is what I always tell people. But yes, so that's why I was saying in the beginning, there's two pieces of the puzzle. One is the snapshot of seeing things and finding out the age of things. But two, it's understanding the conditions as well. And a lot of that information is either things that we are setting eyes on as far as if there were safety issues, or if it was your B and G department saying, we're having issues with our pumps. Yes, they're newer, but they're given us, every three weeks, we're tackling them and getting parts for them. So it was really a comprehensive look by all parties to make sure we understood it all. The next page really just snapshot a few shots of looking at the types of identified pieces. And what a part of our task was to make sure at the end of this, to have pictures of all these types of items as well. So that look, as you find an item, you find where it is, you find the photo that's tied to it, that helps kind of tell us our picture. Architectural. So as we're looking at architectural, this, see, this is the tricky one. So if you look at spaces that we have in here, you're looking at flooring and ceiling replacement. A lot of your spaces, the VCT that you have in these buildings are in great shape. There might be some cracks here and there, or areas you could see there removed it, but a lot of them are good. So the types of items that we would put on here for replacement would be something that you could do down the road. But it's in here as a replacement item, shouldn't you choose to do it? So that number is tied to it, even though it's still in good condition. Classroom partitions, that usually ties to the housing walls or any walls that were thin between classrooms, like at BG. If there's areas that were classrooms, we want to take those out and replace them with thicker walls for some absorption, help renovating those rooms. Toilet room upgrades is more looking at fixtures and bringing them up to date rather than they're failing, they're in trouble. It's more of, you're looking at the same tile that might have been there from many years ago that you might want to change out and upgrade. Doors, flames to hardware, that typically ties to life safety, a lot of those. It's either leverager knobs, doors that are laminating, closures that aren't there, fire-rated doors that need to be fire-rated, that may not be. So doors usually kind of fall in that category pretty easily. Theater upgrades was looking more at the age of your theaters and the potential of upgrading those systems in those spaces. The owner requests, those are the things that we learned from the AP. And as much as I said, this is strictly your facilities maintenance, we did want to make sure we had some of those, and I did have some of those pieces in here so you at least have a start on those types of projects embedded in this. Life safety items that we found, handrails, code compliance issues that we would see in here. Corridor athletic blockers, that's really conditions of those. Painting, really getting on the painting plan to make sure you stay up, just plenty of those out. Wood flooring in your gyms, classroom shades, and second classroom. Like I said, this is kind of high-level nutshell of the other pieces, but they're kind of bigger ones.
So you have life safety in here. What year are we in where the state comes to do their life safety inspection? Do you know that, the top you have?
Yeah, I think we have two, two and a half years left.
Two and a half years left. So this will probably change because the state will come in and say, you need to upgrade this life safety. Are you taking that into consideration that they're probably going to deem you on this?
This is part of our agenda, we're adding. The list, the top items we're finding are things that you mostly get in the high number.
For the benefit of people listening, could you explain about what the state does?
So typically, every year, we do a ten-year life safety survey. And that is really analyzing your buildings from a life safety and code compliance perspective. And you find items that are identified and that they're usually ranked to be their A, B, or C items. The need-to-dos, the could-dos, and the should-do's, right? Or the need-to-dos, the should-do's, and the could-do's, is how I call them. And it's really looking at items, buildings were built to the code of, they were built that, right? And as years have gone on, codes have changed and been updated. But what that ten-year life safety survey does is helps identify items that would be code compliance issues in buildings that either have evolved over time or are there that have been there, right, as maintenance items. So on the architectural side, we would do the survey on your behalf and submit those downstate. And anything that gets submitted downstate will trigger action items that you have to perform. Those level A items are items that you need to perform in the later. The level B items are three to five years, and level C items are five to ten years. And that is something that we're with you as a district to try to get those published on the ten-year cycle. And then when you complete them, they get checked off the list, and you're good for ten years until, or so.
So, Mrs. Parker, are we? Thank you. Are we keeping a list of the things that are, oh my gosh, we must do these right away? Is that a separate, smaller list? Like we found a door that's someplace that's not fire-rated, where we need a fire-rated door. Or, you know, someplace that is at risk for our students or staff members, or we've got something crumbling into the ground. or we've got something crumbling into the ground?
Yes, anytime that we come across something that poses a safety hazard or threat, we address immediately. So part of this process, we're ahead of the game a little bit in identifying some of these needs two years out, and anticipating some of those needs that we can hold into this place. But absolutely anything that's a safety hazard, we address immediately.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I don't want to, as much as budgeting, and you can't afford everything on the list, I want to make sure if we see something, we're in a safe environment for our students, staff members.
Always.
And if you were to circle back to the slides earlier, when we had the prioritization color coding, when we identify items, if there's a life safety item, it's color coded with a certain color. That's telling us on a priority level, those are the types of things, we've got to make sure we address those. The other ones have different priorities. So it's an easy snapshot for us to rise those to the top. And I will tell you, I mean, from a life safety perspective, the types of items that you find, wire glass is a big one. And if you're a liberal with a wire glass, that was years ago the way to help do a fire rating between corridors and classrooms. They're not everywhere, it's the glass that has the little X's and a heart on it. And there really isn't an issue in it, but the idea is, if you put your hand through it, the glass is going to down, but when you pull it back out, it is going to come with your hand and get out, right? So if we look at large expanses of that, that usually rises to the top. It is something that everyone did, and it was a proper procedure of getting things in. Now they want to change it, and it's more temporary. Where if you were to bump it, or punch it, or hit it, it would just shatter and crumble to little pieces and never damage anywhere, right? Little ones, like in that door, if there is it, that doesn't, no one's ever hit that. If there's larger pieces, that's something that we would identify and try to address. So the level of need is really, we come to the table and tell you the priority level of it. Even though it might be a life safety item, might not be as important as if it was another piece that has newer, direct conditions of students.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, so at the end of the day, if you want to go back to your architectural, same concept. We tally up the dollars that we do, we identify each and all the buildings, and then comprehensively, here's kind of what we show. Building envelope and roofing. Building envelope and roofing, similar nature. And it's been great, because if you ever look at your buildings, and from a roof perspective, for better means, because your team has done a great job keeping them to date and making sure we're replacing roofs, and making sure we're keeping the buildings by your type. It's interesting, a lot of people think, oh, you hit the roof once, and that's it. Buildings are so expansive, there's so many different roof areas, so many different vintages of roof areas, and so many different types of roofs that you have on your buildings as you look through it over time, based on the snapshot when they're installed, that it really is good to have a plan and a task of what to replace what. If you had to replace a lot at once, that's trouble, right? So it's nice to make sure that they're sequentially going, getting done, and taken care of, because no roofer will ever tell you they could ever do one entire building at once. That doesn't, never happens. So the logic behind this is understanding all your ages and the conditions of your roofs. When it comes to the age, one, it's looking at the ages of them, and two, it's understanding that there's anything that's happened on there. So you might have a roof that is twenty years old, and if you look at it, you might see there's areas peeling back and flashing, or there's areas that are, there's seams that are coming to, coming up. Preventative maintenance can solve those things and keep reducing one life impacts. So as we look at those, we understand those, and we embed a preventative maintenance type dollars that help keep these roofs going. I always say roofs is an interesting one, because when you, those are the same types of things that you might have a twenty-five year roof or a thirty year roof. When you get to that time, you go and you look at it, and really, it's just telling us to get eyes on it. And a lot of roofs, as long as they're maintained, you go much longer than that. So it's not telling you that you have to do it, it's just telling you to get eyes on it. Windows, it's looking at windows that might, from a thermal side, if they're single pane windows, they don't have to be, if they're not insulated, so they're letting the outside of your in, inside of your out, especially. So looking at getting those replaced throughout, so we want to make sure we can replace those spaces. Wall cracks or expansion joints, over time, you do control joints in the building, and that little filler that kind of, as time goes on, starts crumbling as it gets dryer. Making sure that we're eliminating those and staying on those that are getting replaced. Tuck pointing, that's similar nature, trying to find out the vertical surfaces that we can make sure we tuck point. And then things like stone cells, making sure that your leaps are happening, that they're still draining correctly, and they're not kind of clunking out. A diagram that kind of shows you, that becomes easy as we look through the documents, things like this that show you all your roofs, and this is that prospect, for example, and it's telling you the age of the roofs, kind of like in that prospect, that we're going to be replacing that, graduating, coming up. But it really helps you give you a quick snapshot to look at and say, okay, what roofs are older than others, what needs more help than others? And this diagram kind of gives you that quickly. If you switched your eyes, tested your eyes, that you could read all the years on the way to it, to every little detail. Looking at mechanical, same thing here, is looking at everything like your existing rooftop units, your air handlers, all your unit that's around your buildings. It really categorizes all your existing equipment. It's a mixture of saying what it was done, and how they're performing. And that kind of shows you a little snapshot. What's nice is here, for your ability grounds, I've taken great care of all your ability, you notice that. There's not much red. The red, that is, they are big ticket items that are sitting there, that in their life are dedicated to it all. So those rooftop units is very, are very big ones. Pretty kind of snapshot of those spaces, and then.
We're looking on that previous slide, there are some categories that don't have any color coding. Does that mean that they don't consider color?
I did something right there. If we look at mechanical condition, things that help further detail, this is the tool that we want to make sure we have, is as you look at your items, like your rooftop units, your equipment, it's really saying what it is, what type of equipment it is, when it was installed, what their approximate life and what their approximate date is. So this is kind of another way of being able, and this is just a portion of this page. This building was three point D of stuff, and most buildings are, but I wanted to make sure it's big enough for you to read, so I'm just kind of showing you a portion of it. And really, this is another tool that we use to help kind of identify those spaces. Looking at plumbing and fire protection, it's really understanding all your toilet rooms, looking at your drinking fountains and boilers, equipment, thermostat, mixing valves, which is controlling the hot and cold levels in all your sinks, galvanizing piping throughout, checking those. It's really looking at all those components, and making sure that we identify them. And we're getting to the last piece, which is electrical. On the electrical side, it's looking at buildings from the switch gear, your panel boards. I always say, you know, buildings were built when they were, the power that was coming, service coming to them was installed when it was, and as time goes out, the technologies evolve, the things evolve. You're not at the point where you're plugging in something once out of a room, and it turns off the other. No, but we want to make sure that things are sized accordingly, and there may be some panels that need to grow over time, right? LED lighting and energy conservation, that part, we want to make sure we can try to show that you started it, what's left of it, to kind of grow it into all your spaces. Looking at your fire alarms, and I mentioned earlier, the theatrical lighting, and then your generators, your power and communication. So what it all ended, I went deep. And really, the important piece of hitting that high level approach of all of those is really to kind of tell you, here's the types of things that we are looking for. A lot of people come to the table wondering, in the message facilities, like what are you looking for? In this case, our primary focus was on your existing assets, and making sure they're, all the maintenance type items that keep these buildings going for many years to come are identified on here, and accounted for, right? It wasn't tied a lot to the curriculum side of things, that's a whole different process. But really, our focus was really on the buildings themselves. The summary overall chart, if you look at it, I gave you a snapshot showing one building. This kind of gives you an overall look at all of them. If you were to see that whole chart together in one page, you would kind of reach all of down to the bottom, or give you a grand total, this is like the sticker shot, but it is about eight hundred fifty million dollars of identified types of today cost items. If you were to take all those items and spread it out over time, you'd forget the exact amount. And our goal is to first come up with this list, show you that whole list, start now, come a decade, meet with the administration team to start identifying priorities, things that need to happen over the next ten years. Other items that don't need to happen, that get pushed on the road, are taken off the list, but still accounted for in here, and help come back to the table with a very comprehensive outlook. The next steps, we want to make sure, if we look at your five year plan and honor the work that's already been done by you as a district, and the district strategic committee, that says the type of capital improvement practices that you have, always have been running, that dimension is, and make sure they're not forgotten, and help use those to help prioritize as well. And then really, the key thing is going to be, continue to refine all our projections from years twenty-four through thirty-four, to come back to the table with the items that we need to mix.
For members. Additional questions? Let me, I'm sorry.
Well, that was a good presentation. I do have a couple of questions and a comment. Not a fan of baked in fees. Not a fan. Spent twelve years of River Charles twenty-six, didn't like it when we did that. So I'd like to see, my, me personally, would like to see those fees broken up. How much are we paying you guys for this additional work? So that's number one. Number two, contingency costs. I know, I understand the ten percent, but, and I understand that sometimes things can change, but when things change, it should be brought to the board. Because giving you guys free rein for that ten percent, especially if it's eight hundred million, eight hundred million dollars, that's eighty million dollars, and that wouldn't sit well with me, but I think the contingency cost should be brought to the board, because if nothing changes, then there shouldn't be any contingency costs, and that ten percent should reduce the cost of our projects. So that's my personal feeling too. The rest of my questions, I think, are more for Scott and Chris, but that will be a later date, because total cost, where's the money going to come from? How are we choosing when projects are first? And costs are based on current dollars and stuff that obviously come down the line. But other than that, I think you did a great presentation, thank you.
Mr. Jensen?
Thank you very much. One question, back on the mechanical condition assessment, where we're into fan rooms, or in this case, the floor mirrors. Maybe you could go back to, or I can reference it. I did understand what the state's estimated date of installation, nineteen seventy-two, and the state's possible life cycle, twenty-five years? And the state's replacement date, nineteen ninety-seven, does that mean they were replaced? Are we still working on those things?
You're still working on those things. That's saying that that's the estimated replacement date, that would make sense.
Okay, so this fits under the category, even though it's the estimated replacement date and we're well past it. The maintenance on it has been such, and it's operationally such, that it's still operating in a fashion that will do what it's supposed to do.
I think it's a testament to our CMA to, more of a job we did.
I just wanted to understand it, because when you see seventy-two as date of installation, twenty-five years, nineteen ninety-seven is supposed to be replaced, here we are, twenty-six years later. And the only reason that these things are property, like we are, even though it shows red, it should have been replaced based on the life cycle, is because of what we're doing with the CMA, with the people at locations, we've been growing.
Do you have a question?
Anyone else?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Jensen.
How long can we expect the buildings to last? We've already got, our youngest building is like fifty years old. Can we expect them to last for a hundred years?
With proper maintenance, yes.
Did you say proper or pepper?
Proper. Anything lasts. Listen, from a community standpoint, we've been doing schools for a long time. These are very important assets to the community, that you want to make sure that keep going, right? And taking care of them leads life to keep them going for many, many more years. And you have them, as you can see, roof replacement, keeping things sealed and watertight, and taking care of your pavement, all those sorts of things are things you've already been doing that's continuing them to keep going. And this is getting that list on the table that keeps them to continue and operate in the same fashion that we've been operating in here that's been the years plus. Yes.
That's it?
Thanks.
Pardon my following.
Okay, so when you said there was a built-in construction contingency, you gave the design, the scope creep, as about ten percent. What was the baked in construction contingency?
I would check it, five percent, I think ninety-five percent.
Do school districts, you mentioned that it included a bunch of these. Do school districts get breaks from other related organizations? For example, the village of, when we look at things like, have the inspectors on project, or the...
Some, no.
Yeah, some villages have passed a wave of fee that went, an inspection fee.
Or a permitting cost.
A permit, yeah, right, no way that, yeah. But you can't, right, but you can't, it's not guaranteed, that's why you have to build it in.
Well, we're thinking of memos of understanding with some of our partners in other areas we should think about, about.
Value of investing in the relationship.
That's exactly right. So we built, this is more of a question, not for you guys, I don't think you know the answer, but we built BG about fifty years ago. About how much did it cost to build, do we remember? Anyone?
When I was seventeen, my haircuts were fifty cents, that's all I had.
Well, I'm just wondering.
I mean, I'm still vertical. I'm still able to sit up and take nourishment, but I don't remember that far back.
Okay, okay, Mr. Dussling.
If you could find out, Mr. Dussling, and take an answer later.
I'll look that up.
Nellie, just one more point about Buffalo Row. Oh, that was the last referendum that District Two fourteen had, was to build Buffalo Row High School.
Yeah, I'm getting there. So this was, this has been a lot of work. It's been a solid ten months, close to a year. Approximately how many worker hours went into this?
Oh, gosh, I don't even know where to start on that one. I could say a lot, and I could actually tell you exactly, but once I could drop this, it was out. But I would tell you that from a survey perspective, there was a large shift of time and we were spending a lot of nights, it was school time, from three till seven, or eight o'clock at night, for most of your winter exploring, surveying your buildings. And circling back, we got one route to hit all the sites for quite some time, so. I wouldn't even know that word yet, and that was just the survey part, so a lot.
So with regard to, I believe you said there's another sort of phase of this type of work to happen, right? This was the survey, the categorization, the estimation, all those moving parts. About, you said maybe a year from now, you would have a better idea of what would go into that ten-year plan, or, you know, how to kind of filter it down. About, at a process, percentage of completion basis, where are we at in our surveying, and our looking, and our reviewing, and all of that?
We're probably at the eighty percent mark. So the last twenty percent, and really, the reason why it takes so long is there's a lot of puzzles now, from the finance side that we've got to look at. Understanding what it is, what can be done. And as you start weighing those in, those will influence the types of things that we bring to the table that would work. If we all had all the money in the world, and I'm a taxpayer, I live around here, so it's a yes, that'd be great. But I know we don't, so we, but we have to figure out what makes sense. And those take, let's say, pretty much every month going down to the spring, is a test organized, a test organized, till we finally work with the administration to formulate a sign that makes sense before we bring it to the table. We want to make sure we vet and cover everything before it comes to you, that it is, everyone feels confident in this type of work that needs to happen, and can happen, before it ever even comes to any sort of fruition, and show them.
Would you mind going to your final slide? I just wanted to make a point. I think Mr. Yuli was about to share, the final slide is, so we, last, the last board meeting, we recapped the summer of twenty twenty-three, and highlighted what the summer of twenty twenty-four work would be. The bids for, bidding process for that summer twenty twenty-four work would be coming up very, very soon, February, I don't know, sooner than that. I mean, winter. Winter, okay. But what Mr. Yuli is trying to set up is that third bullet. The summer twenty twenty-five work will come to you, our goal is, is to bring that in February twenty twenty-four, eighteen months in advance. Purpose in doing so is so that our, our construction manager partners can bid on it in the most competitive times, so far enough in advance that.
bid on it in the most competitive times, so far enough in advance that their docket isn't full, so we'll get the best prices from them. And then we have an adequate amount of time, eighteen months in advance for all of our projects, is the cycle that Mr. Yuli is trying to establish. So from this point forward, this is the overarching assessment. So now, Mr. Yuli and Spitsak and Mr. Keely, and then ultimately, as a group, I'll join them and we'll start talking about that prioritization, the coming proposal internally for this assessment. How do we prioritize our greatest area of need? And that's, we'll bring that back. And then we'll start talking about, okay, how do we break this down and how are we establishing budgets for what we have financially determined that we can control? And what are we going to tackle? And then where does that leave us? And then a bigger conversation of what options exist, because obviously our annual budget's not going to hit even seventy-nine million dollars in ten years. So next step is prioritization, and then we start talking about the dollars and then come back for some values conversations around how are we going to keep our buildings safe and healthy.
And so I'm assuming we're in a, I'm assuming we're going to prioritize first by health and safety, things to keep the buildings from crumbling into the ground.
Correct.
Is there a bang for your buck analysis going in there? I do love a bargain, right?
Well, I'm glad that you mentioned that because.
Where can we use paint? Where can we rebrand? Where could we?
Well, I think where that comes in is how we, we put in all of our mechanicals. And one of the things, when we had our comprehensive meeting with all of the partners that I shared with the group, is this, this is, and one of our priorities is this is an opportunity for us to become a more energy efficient and sustainable district. And there are, there are millions of dollars to be had in school districts when they focus on reducing their, their electricity consumption. And, and when we, when we get these new air handlers and we can control them online, control that, that, the fresh airflow, we begin to be able to capture and, and control how much energy we use. I would, I, I would easily set a guess that we can save two million dollars a year in our energy spend in the next ten years. Just on actions we can take.
Right.
By investing in the right products and, and educating our CMA staff on how to control them. And that's before we even talk about solar and things like that. So this is an opportunity for us to start talking about energy efficiency. And what you'll see from us in the coming months, we'll be beginning to set the stage and, and partnering with groups that are going to help us go down that road simultaneously with all of this work.
I mean, I really appreciate that and I appreciate the partnership concept because my understanding on the ticket price back here is, and, and let's say we're not going to do all eight hundred and fifty million dollars worth of work, but, but let's say it winds up being three hundred million. We don't have that in our budget over ten years, right? We can get some of it out of our budget over ten years, but then where does it come from? It comes from our taxpayers' dollars, and we all live in districts, so that's a pinch on everyone sitting here as well. So, you know, and that's, and we start saying words like referendum, unless there are partners.
We're not saying that word right now.
Yeah.
I think that we need to do our prioritization project first and then let us look at what that roadmap looks like and then have some, some conversations, because there are options that are disposable before we get to that point.
Okay.
Because I know, you know, I joke, I joked in, in some of our conversations about the first few minutes of, of interview process and, and the conversations back and forth, but in minute ten or so, as you mentioned, we have been referencing for fifty years and we've done it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a point of pride.
Those are all real things.
For this board, it is. It is something that has stuck with me and it's not something that we take lightly, it's not something we're rushing towards. There are opportunities and options at our disposal before we have to think about that.
Right, but I did, I did do the, I'm sorry, I'm running, I did do the walking tour with Mr. Yuli and saw all, pretty much all of the things on this list, not all of them, I did not peek my head into the CLS. I would have been willing, but I didn't, wasn't offered the opportunity because anyhow, but, but I do think that, that there's, there's a lot of work to be done. We, there's a lot of work to be done. So, right, Lenny, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted, Dr. Rowe's going to come back with us with the plan. I think we're getting ourselves a little bit here.
That's correct.
He's going to come to us with the plan. He knows the R word is not in there.
It's probably, probably false or true when you see a prioritization line.
Yeah, so I think we're jumping the gun here, but good questions. Mr. Walker?
Then what's the point of me trying to help everybody?
Is your mind quiet?
It is on. Let me get closer and use my diaphragm. So I, we're putting the cart before the horse. We know that there's things to be done, but true or false, you guys are doing the assessment. This is not a annuity for your company or anybody else's company here to get eight hundred and fifty-two million out of the district. This is just the analysis phase. And for those that are home, you know, it's a riveting thing when you're on the board. For people at home, the highlights are, oh my God, we're in dire straits with the buildings, they weren't taken care of, and we have eight hundred and fifty-two million dollars coming, right? That's probably been like that for the last ten years, the last twenty years, whatever it is, as the buildings aged, right? So I, I think we got to not speculate on the future. Yes, this is a very comprehensive plan and we will be judicial and judiciary with the money that we spend as we go forward, right? And we will get the bang for the buck and, you know, we have some of the best people in the area doing this. And nothing says that the people that helped us do the analysis are going to be the contractors that actually get the things.
And I am going to piggyback off that. And I mentioned at the beginning, the idea of this was to make sure we identified everything all your buildings to handle. Doesn't mean that all these items needed to get done or will need to get done in an easier timeframe. It's more of just making sure that's on that list because as years go by, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, it'll always be on that list and it's always something to trigger in your minds and think they're going to be easy to do. So you're exactly right, but, but this isn't saying that you spend that much dollars. It's more about how do we be smart and be physically responsible to create the types of projects going forward, knowing all this information? And really using it as a tool to help guide that process.
Because what, what this gives us now is a comprehensive ten-year view of what work needs to be done in the district. And annually, Mr. Yuli will be able to come and offer a, a brief board update, updating this ten-year plan based on, we replaced this, therefore it's no longer on the list, or something is rising and needs to be more, come, to be replaced at an earlier date. And that's where the living, breathing document comes. So you'll get an annual report on the status of this so that it truly is a living document that will be updated annually to board.
Mrs. Bar, I, I know you're, you have questions, but I just wanted to remind the board, we do have one more presentation. So, but that, I'm not stopping you, but go ahead. Two quick questions.
Could you please explain, I understand the ten percent contingency, and I know another board member got mentioned concern, but how, how does your firm work with the contingency process? Go right ahead, if, if it's within that ten percent, right away, maybe adjustments or what? What is the process?
And really, and, and, you know, you asked about that, and I've always done it two different ways. If you look at the individual pages, it shows everything broken down. On the summary, sometimes people get lost in it when we show it, so I've either showed it or not. Really, it's not intended to say if we're using this, it's more about, you're crystal balling out five years from now, a project that you're trying to guess. And if you ask any construction manager, anyone, people always used to hate our job and say, how, as an architect, everyone always says, how much is it going to cost me? And you need to know it before you, you never designed anything. Really, you're just saying, I need, I need these classrooms, tell me now how much it's going to be if we're going to be letting this job without any input of, all right, what are we trying to do? What are we trying to achieve? Where does this want to go? So it's hard on our job to give you that answer. So that contingency is more of a, we understand that those types of questions are here, but we want to make sure there's enough safety for when that time comes down the road and it becomes a project of any sort of design, it, we, we, we have a safeguard there. So really, it's, it's, it's a safeguard because there's been no design, and I think it's more this identifying items, and that's, that's really hard to do. You asked about buildings, you say construction of a new school, let's say your, your high schools are around four hundred and fifty thousand square feet apiece. Construction today is telling us that it's probably six or seven hundred bucks a square foot to build a new building like that. What does that equate to? It's like three hundred million dollars for a new school, right? That's today. Are you, we, that, and that's without doing any design, just we're just saying on ballpark. Where in ballpark do you say this right? So it's hammering.
And that's what this is. This is ballpark, so that when you get to a project and once we've prioritized, we will have a more detailed line items of, of, of cost, of the materials, of hours, and so on and so forth.
Typically, what, at this stage, it will, even on a priority level, it will tell us, the only things that would probably adjust in our priority levels of this, and I'm sorry, I know you have other things, and I, this is what I love to do in an house, is, is the fact that when we look at a problems and scale, when you're talking about bang for your buck, there's types of things that we want to do in, in sequence together that, that helps save costs. Like if you're replacing plumbing in the corridors, you replace your ceilings at the same time and now you're doing, you're saving on that. Or you're replacing roofs, that's when you do the mechanical unit on there at the same time because it makes sense because they're, they're kind of married at that. Where if you didn't want it, you go back to replace it, it doesn't work, right? Those start happening and those start happening, those types of priority, as we look at how we group things together, that might help you find numbers, right? But until it becomes a job down the road, that's when we come back and say, all right, now we go to project, first step at the schematic levels, we look at it, we analyze it, and it gets refined at that moment before you guys agree like with the project in the year. So before the project even starts, we'll have, we'll have a better understanding. But at this stage, you got to be, you got to, you got to show up a general number and tell that it becomes a project in the year, that's it.
And when it becomes a project, it goes out to bid and you approve the bid and therefore the project. So they will all come back to you broken down in step by step by step, where you'll approve that.
I just have one other quick question. Some of our buildings, I mean, we obviously make sure everything is up to code, but some things are supposed to be grandfathered or have been adapted. Fire suppression systems, sprinklers, where are those included in your evaluation? Are there modifications?
They're in here and the expansion of them to get through your whole building in the year. So you have certain segments of all your buildings done, and in addition, if, if you become fully sprinkler, that code changes. And you're not, and that code doesn't change, then tell you're fully sprinkler. So you did ninety-nine percent of your building sprinklers, but that, they still tell you that your corridors have to be separated from your classrooms with a one-hour rating. The minute you sprinkler everything, that, that log goes away, that code goes away, and now it don't become an area. So that, in this plan, it's taking what you have in place and completing it everywhere around.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I have one more thing. I know that we're trying to, I am promising, I know we're trying to prioritize. I hope that we'll consider looking at our projects, obviously health and safety and the ranking, right? But on a lens of, lens of equity, I want to make sure that students in building A have the same access to the same types of things like labs or kitchens or et cetera as buildings in, students in building B. I realize our buildings are not going to become identical, nor do we want them to be, but we need to make sure that we're treating our students in district the same across district and there's not the ah building and the oh, don't look over their buildings. Everything needs to be worthy of being in this district. And that's, our students need to feel like when they're walking into another school in district that their school is just as great as this one is.
Who's over here?
Okay.
Okay. Really appreciate it. Appreciate all the work that has gone into this and I'm sure we're just talking to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Surely see and absenteeism, a way different subject. Oh, clicker. Share a topic. Thank you. So here we have Dr. Lopez, who's presenting tonight.
I'm going to, we'll, we'll introduce them all, we have them all on the screen, so we'll talk about them. And Jessica's going to give you some handouts just because they'll be on the screen, so if you want to see it in a larger size, you can see it a copy of this.
Okay.
Okay.
Fire away.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to provide information regarding efforts to respond to the chronic absenteeism in the district. As you can certainly see from all the headlines you see there, it's certainly, it's certainly a nationwide concern. And as we've stepped sort of beyond the pandemic, we know something has changed with our students and families, that this is not typical, right, what we're experiencing. So in our district and state, if you can see this chart here, you see that the change in attendance from the pre to post pandemic has been dramatic. In fact, the increase locally really outpaces that of the state average. So I think that's an important factor to consider. So this is why we focused on this. So what we're going to learn about this evening will help us deepen our understanding collectively and certainly inform the board of the significant efforts underway to address this concern. So we're going to discuss understanding why attendance matters and what the research tells us about the root causes, how what we've learned and known has informed our response as a district, and finally sharing our engagement strategies to bring all of us together in addressing this challenge. And so we have different speakers for each section, we'll, we'll have them in the notes as they come up. So first off, we have Dan Bacart, who's going to talk about why attendance matters.
Good evening, everybody. So to start off, I think I want to highlight these two key points, right? So you know that when students are coming to class, ninety more, ninety percent look warm up the time, they're getting A, B, or C ninety-three percent of the time. So they are successful. When, when we get kids into classes, they're successful. That's what we're shooting for, right? And then overall, so over the course of their high school careers, students who show, sorry, sorry, students who show up ninety percent of the time during their high school careers have a ninety-eight percent graduation rate in District Two fourteen. And I will say, that might even be low, that's probably a conservative number, because if students transfer out, we don't necessarily know if they graduate, right? That's just the data we have. So that is really, really encouraging ideal.
I have a quick question.
Absolutely. Please.
When you say it's low, is that low across the country or should be low between the percent?
I think, correct. I think this, that ninety-eight percent is a very conservative way of looking at it. I think it could even be ninety-nine, I think, you know, very, probably not a hundred percent, but very close. Yep. I do want to define a couple of ways of looking at attendance because I think it's important. The state has some business rules around how they do it, and then there are some other ways that we do it more locally because it's kind of how it feels inside of a building. So that top part is an example of kind of the way the state looks at attendance, right? So they're looking at attendance minutes that a student is in class. So I got the example here of, if we have about twelve thousand students in our district and they take about thirteen classes over the course of those two semesters, that's about six and a half classes per semester, multiply that by ninety days in each, in each semester, that could do those fourteen million possible times that a kid can show up to class, right? Does that make sense? Fourteen million times over the course of the year, a student can be in a class. So if you mul, then if you divide that by two, because we have about forty-five days on the block schedule for our students, that that gives you about seven million records, right, per year that we're talking about. So that's kind of the way the state looks at it. And then another way that we've looked at it is by course attendance rates for students. So how much is a specific student showing up to one specific class? And that math is pretty easy right there, is just take the number of meetings, so about forty-five, take away the absences and then divide, and that gives you your attendance rate for that particular class. This is a look at the way kind of the state more approaches looking at attendance over time. Now, to be transparent, this is going to be a little different than what you see on the student, on the school report card, because again, they have very specific business rules. So this is a way that we can replicate year in and year out that we're very confident in, that we can say, if you ask me, you know, three years from now, I can replicate this for you. So that's why we wanted to look at it this way. This is for credit bearing classes in periods one through eight, where students receive a final grade of A, B, C, D, or F, right, our primary final grade. So that kind of limits what we're looking at to the most common things that we're talking about. So you can see the trend over time, right? We've had a very close to ninety-five percent attendance rate and now this past year was at ninety-one percent. I know that doesn't seem like a huge drop, but to contextualize that, right? If you look, in twenty nineteen, that ninety-four, almost ninety-five percent equated to just under seven hundred thousand classes missed, right? That seems like a big number. So if we account for like the difference in schedules and go to twenty twenty-three, that turns into almost one point four, you know, just over one point three million classes missed for students. So it's only a three, you know, almost four percent difference, but it's a lot of classes, if that makes sense. Then this is going to that second point of where we kind of look at it locally, of how many time, or how many courses do we have students who aren't there ninety percent of the time? And the reason that we focused on the ninety percent is because national research, research kind of highlights that as, as the focus, whereas the state has looked at ninety-five percent for C C R I. that as the focus, whereas the state has looked at 95% for CCRI. If you looked back right at the previous, if you look back at this previous one, we were almost never at 95% overall, right? So 95% is a high threshold, 90% is again, what most national research says, can you get your kids here 90% or more of the time? So that's what we're looking at here. So this right here is the percent of classes. So each student and course, so if I'm John and I'm taking English, that's one. If I'm John and I'm taking math, that's two. Each of those counts for one towards the total here. So if you look pre-pandemic in 2019, we had just over 13% of classes where students weren't in that class 90% or more of the time. That has doubled now in the previous year to 26%, right? And so it used to be about that represented in 2019, 20,000 courses, and now in 2023, we've doubled it to about 40,000 courses where that's the case for our students. Why does all of this matter, right? So again, we want kids to succeed. We want kids to do well. Here's a chart of success rates based on grades in those classes. So on the left-hand side are students who have zero to four absences in a particular class, and students on the right-hand bar chart are students who have five or more absences in that particular class. Now, this is 2016 through 2023, so we have lots of data here, big end values, and, but we did omit 2020 and 2021. The reason that I've done that in these charts is because those were distinctly different learning conditions because of the global pandemic, so we kind of wanted to remove those to say, these are as close to kind of apples-to-apples comparisons as we can get otherwise. So you'll see here, the D and F rate in our students who have zero through four absences is just under 8%. If you look then on the right, that goes up to almost 55% when a student misses five or more times. So there's a seven-time grade difference. Yes, please.
Ten in like, like students in like classes?
It is all students in all classes.
All students in all classes?
For that entire range. So from 2016, I mean, it's, I think it's close to a million records that we're talking about.
Okay.
So yes, yes. Yes, correct. Classes that receive a grade. Yes. So when, I think another way to highlight the 90% attendance here is, we have 45 possible attendance meetings, right, for a class in the semester. You'll notice that the threshold we're looking at here is five, right? So that's about 10% of the time. Once that student crosses that 10% threshold, there's a significant increase in the percentage of these apps that that student might receive. So to sum that all up, and kind of one point is, one absence a month. We want to try and keep it under one absence a month to help those students be successful in those classes.
Hi. My name's Jessica Herman, and I'm the Director for Student Services. Thanks for having us. So this is clearly a growing challenge and a complex issue, and in order to tackle it, we need to kind of understand what is getting in our students' way. So this next section, we'll be looking at some of the research around barriers to attendance and learn more about kind of what research is telling us about what's, what those barriers are for students. So Attendance Works is one of the biggest national organizations looking at this topic, and they partner with schools, they conduct research, and they've outlined four categories of root causes for attendance challenges. And so understanding these, of course, helps us to design interventions that can be most impactful for students. They look at barriers to school, aversion to school, disengagement, and misconceptions. So barriers are some of those factors outside of school that are impacting a student getting here. So transportation challenges, family challenges, we've worked with some families, some students who we don't realize something's going on. I just worked recently with a student whose mom is undergoing cancer treatments, and the student had a lot of anxiety about leaving home. And so once we, but we didn't really know all of these things, right? And once the team understood these challenges, we were able to work through that. But that was an example of a barrier that was outside of the school's control that was really affecting her getting to school. Aversion is really that idea of, a lot of students kind of maybe have a negative association with school. Historically, they have, it hasn't possibly been a successful place for them, or there's generational trauma associated with school. There's something that they're trying to avoid. So a lot of students, you know, find something that is more rewarding or a place where they do feel more successful. And that's another big category of reasons kids are not coming to school. Disengagement is another, sorry, category of root cause challenges. And this is really a lot, when students really just kind of don't feel like school is for them, feeling like they don't really belong, or they don't really have a lot driving them to get to school. Or they're not getting the support they need, or there's, you know, something outside of the building that they need to attend to instead. And then misconceptions is another big area of challenge for students. There's been research showing that people don't, that they underestimate how much they've actually missed. When you ask families or students, they'll say they've missed just a couple days, and you actually look, and it's been a substantial amount of time. And they underestimate the impact of that, not realizing that all of those absences do add up and have a negative impact on school. Also, the understanding that all absences impact a student's performance, not just unexcused. So families not recognizing maybe that taking extended vacations or taking their child out of school for several appointments is also contributing to these challenges. And so based on all of these, what they're finding to be these root causes, Attendance Works has shared some policy recommendations, and these are the basis for some of the changes that we're making, and some of the strategies we'll go into further in the presentation.
And I know that's small, for you to look at the, it's just as a reference there, and we're gonna go through is what we, how we've implemented a lot of these concepts. But on here, you have things, reference whether it's tracking daily attendance, understanding the types of absences that are happening, ensuring we're providing enriching and engaging opportunities for students, and so on. But all the work that Attendance Works has done has really been pre-pandemic research. Like, this is the prominent research group that is most highly cited in the lit reviews because of all their work. So we also wanted to take a look, particularly through our new partnership with EAB, the Education Advisory Board, of what's happened since the pandemic. So we know what everybody always thought was connected to chronic absenteeism. EAB engaged in about 150 districts. They did administrators, building leaders, support staff, they surveyed students, they did a review of the literature in order to put together this, this piece of research that they have of why they believe chronic absenteeism is so high now, and how district leaders can start fixing it. And you'll notice right there is, we actually had the same conversation this spring, which is, we didn't have systems that were designed to support the significant number of students in crisis that we had, when we talked about over 30, 40% of our students in tier two and tier three interventions. So that is partly why we responded. In their research, in the past, when, as was referenced by Jessica, it was because of work. It was because of transportation. Those were sort of material barriers to attendance that prevented families, for example, to get to school. However, from their analysis, because the impact is really so broad across all demographics, students, and it was so significant that there was really something else going on, that there was something that happened during the pandemic that really changed the dynamic for us in schools regarding absenteeism and chronic absenteeism. So EAB identified three characteristics of today's chronic absenteeism. First, that parents see less value in in-person attendance. Two, that students are motivated, aren't motivated to come to school. And three, teachers remain unsure and underutilizing commanding absenteeism. So for the first finding, and this concept of parent perception formed during the pandemic, if you remember when we shifted to remote instruction and really continued availability of classrooms online, we sort of trained kids to be able to access Schoology and be able to get all their work done and keep up with classes in that way. And that led many families, according to their research here, to believe that students can get the same value from school regardless of whether or often they're on campus. And if you recall, districts also repeatedly emphasized the necessity of staying home. Even if, even if students wanted to be there, kept, if you were sick, if you thought you were sick, it was always better to stay at home. And their perception is that families believe that the change in messaging from districts towards the value of in-person instruction left them skeptical, that that's really the case. In the second finding, can you move on to the next one? In the second finding was based on their student surveys. So 71% of students, for example, that they surveyed, reported experiencing anxiousness and depression, while only 24% of high school students report accessing counseling when they're struggling with mental health. 63% of teens here wish their high school provided more information about post-secondary opportunities, sort of reflecting this sense of maybe school isn't really providing value to me. So when students feel capable of success, connected to others, supported through, supported, supported through their challenges and engagement activities outside of the class, they're more likely to come to school daily. And they also need to understand how their classes connect to their life after high school. So otherwise, they don't see the point of why should I be at school? And how does, why should I be struggling through academic or social-emotional issues? But after the three years really of the pandemic disruption, and the experience at many districts, most students today feel that school is stressful, lonely, boring, unimportant, and further, more students can access sufficient class materials online. So that sort of facilitates them allowing to skip school when they don't see the benefits of being there in person. The third point finding was related to teachers, and the fact that they found teachers have an outsized impact on their students' attendance compared to other adults in the building, that that is who parents prefer to hear from overwhelmingly, about the importance of attendance, even over principals or counselors. And according to their research, teachers believe their attendance responsibilities begin and end with just a headcount during class, and they're not really sure what to say when they do reach out to families. This is from their national service. But they did find average attendance increased when teachers were directly engaged, and they cite some examples of that. So to address these problems, just like there's policy recommendations from Attendance Works that we took into account, there are sort of three conditions that EAB identified, right? So first, that parents need to know why and when to bring their students to school. And the reason that is, and the reason things such as personalized helpful text messages work, is because parents view text messages as more accessible and more personal communication. They prefer that over a phone or email, and are more likely to respond when given a clear set of actionable options. The second one is that students can and want to come to school. So students who feel connected to an adult at the school, they show a higher interest in learning and better mental health than they're connected here, is making them more likely to show up. So ensuring that every student has an adult in the school that checks in with them. And the third is that teachers understand and embrace their influence over student attendance. Frequent or active touchpoints from teachers builds trust with parents, and makes students less likely to skip school. And also providing talking points for what to say when you're engaging in conversations around the narrative of the student not being in school in a supportive, positive manner, as well as extending this even to templates. If you are communicating and writing, what are some sample language that you can use to engage with them? Jessica, a little bit about the brain, and then we'll get out to our response.
Okay, so just to add to this context, right, we know all of these challenges are happening in teenagers whose brains are developing still and who are very highly influenced by peers. A lot of teens are having sleep challenges, teens respond to stress and trauma in different ways, a lot of mental illnesses appear during adolescence. And we know that some of the prefrontal cortex area of executive functioning is still really developing, and those are the kinds of skills that you need to be able to plan and to anticipate consequences and to inhibit yourself and refrain from, you know, instant gratification. And so all of these things coming together, together, you know, with social media and with all of the outside stimulation, it's getting harder and harder for schools to compete. And so these are just all of the complex vectors coming into, contributing to this challenge. And now we'll move on to kind of how are we tackling it, and how are we addressing it.
Thanks. All right. So we build out our response on all the research you found, you saw from Attendance Works, the qualitative interviews and the surveys, along with the review of lead from EAB, and also the contribution of our own staff and community that we've taken into account in developing our action. And a lot of our summer work, that some of the board members were able to participate in and attend during the summer with all of our leaders in all of our schools, and as well as our debt engagement. And these are some of the things that you're familiar with, we'll revise significant policies and procedures, including reporting, asking our guardians to report absences within 24 hours, and ensuring we're submitting attendance within the class period and follow up, adjusting our what we consider as tardy, putting some consequences, yes?
How did that come about? When you told me that a student wasn't considered tardy, if they were 45 minutes late?
Yeah, it was 39 minutes, I believe.
How did that come about?
I, I think because of...
When you said that to me a couple months ago, I went, what?
You know, there's always positive intent. It's the idea, boy, if a student shows up, you know, 20 minutes is unfair to mark them absent for the whole period, right? So there was, the intent was to give students credit for showing up. So if you really do have an 80-minute class period and you show up at 38 minutes, you're still there for half the class. Now, there's no way to mark half attendance in our attendance recording.
But you're missing half the class.
Yes, and what happened is students did not feel, not at all. Some students felt they didn't have to rush to class because they have 38 minutes before they had to get back.
Okay. Go on, go on.
So it created that culture, I would say. So this was an important change in culture.
Well, nine minutes is still, is still a significant, I mean, nine minutes, it's still late, right?
Yes.
If you're not early, you're late. I mean, it's still late.
Yes. So these were all important things that we did, that we started. We also made a strategic process to address some students' absences for course, with teacher engagement that based on this research. And then we also, for students that are missing classes in multiple sections, multiple days, I want you to know, we had students that were actually physically coming to school but not making it to their actual classroom. I don't know why, but, but, and so.
Just for clarification, I'm not, just to make sure we're on the same page. Like, if you're a minute late, you're tardy.
Yes.
After nine minutes, you're absent.
Yes.
Oh, it's changed now.
Right.
So a minute late, there's still, you're gonna be tardy.
If you're, if that first nine minutes, you're tardy to class, and that can lead to consequences if that's a pattern.
So that's a tardy, but not an absentee.
I'm sorry, I did not realize that was considered.
I was just, yeah, I was asking the question, like, how is tardy not anything that's late? So it is.
Increase the countability at all levels here.
So if you're 10 minutes, you're counted, you're considered absent.
So if you're, if you're considered absent?
And that would be an unexcused absence.
Yes.
So if you show up, you're considered absent?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
All right. So we know, oh, there we go. Oh, good, it's working. So we also know, right, students perceive socially, emotional, and mental health and behavior health support show improvements in academic achievement, classroom behavior, engagement in learning, and overall well-being. Good, well, well-being. Nine o'clock. All right. So this is what, as a board, we did in the spring, right? So you expanded human resources, and we began to leverage technology. So we increased access to mental health services, you added psych and social workers, you increased services to all students for this fall, increased focus on prevention by universal tier one, which we'll talk about, you improved implementation of these universal support, and you increased responsive to student attendance because we also added an additional DHSSW at each of the schools.
So you have a handout that includes some of these specific strategies we're using at the tier one, which is the universal, so all students receive, and then more targeted supports. And these are just some of the experiences all students are receiving in order to reiterate and communicate and teach these expectations around attendance and what supports we have in place. So at the beginning of the year, every student receives push-in support from their division head for student success, safety, wellness, or teachers around, you know, what is this culture, what do we expect, and how are we going to all get there together? And then that's reiterated through all these different, in these different avenues, freshman orientation, counselor curriculum. In addition, we're providing a lot of targeted professional development to our staff around supporting students, making challenging phone calls, identifying mental health challenges, and knowing how to support students, de-escalating crises. And so this is all tied into kind of ensuring that every student has access to these services and supports to prevent the chronic absenteeism.
We're excited about this. We'll go back to one.
Thank you very much, Chris Fitzpatrick, Director of Technology. I was thankful when this group asked me to join in their conversations, partially because I was still new to the district, but I had some ideas on attendance and some things that technology might be able to help, partially because of conversations that I had already had in my time in the district. I found early on that the district has a lot of technology, which I agree with. We found unique ways to leverage technology to reach out to our families, to ensure that parents are aware of what's going on when there's students' attendance, to alert them when there's attendance issues, but we also found some opportunities for improvement. So we're going to work through some of those in time. Four things that I did want to highlight briefly tonight. We have, you'll hear us talk a lot about in the coming weeks and months, about our want and desire to have our parents sign into the Infinite Campus Parent Portal app. There is so much information that our parents can get in that app. Creates great information, attendance information here tonight to tell the group here, that tomorrow morning, the district is setting up an application with instructions for parents to be able to report absences. Not even in 24 hours, they can report them instantly on the app for their students. Those attendance reports will go to the schools for approval. Parents will get a verification email once an attendance has been approved, so they know when this happens. It's just a much more efficient way to get attendance data reported and much more time to matter.
And can I add, one of the, I'm sorry, just want to add real quick, one of the things we learned this summer was that there was a belief by our leaders that our attendance was an entirely accurate, in part because of all of these districts and parents starting calling in. It's difficult to do that, that we're not able to track attendance in the target piece. And so it's really important that we make it easy for people to report it, let us know as soon as you know a student's going to be absent. The app is going to make it super simple so that we can ensure that we have accurate information, and then if a student really is absent, we can address it much more quickly and much more directly.
Ideally, what this creates in our attendance office is really an efficiency, so they're not having to spend as much time redoing voicemails, all those sorts of things, to have to get the information.
Yeah, Chris, regarding the app, is there any control that would prevent students from signing up for the app and calling themselves out?
There's separate parent accounts and student accounts. We would have to trust that our parents keep their parent accounts to themselves. So hopefully our parents are doing that. I don't know that we have a great way to really, to know who's using an app on a phone, but that would be a control that's in place. It's completely separate.
Similarly, though, students could have someone call in for that.
Sure.
I wasn't going to say it, but I'm glad you said it.
I appreciate it.
Very much.
And if you think about it, the catch point is, is after that absence is approved, it triggers the emails of the parents. So a student would also have to have the parent account and the email account to then delete the parent's emails. There's a lot of work there to try and...
It's easier just to go to school.
It's easier just to go to school.
It's easier, you get a better grade.
Yes.
So you will hear us mention many times over and over on our ask of our parents to sign up for, and sign into the parent portal app. That app also has the ability to have push notifications. So as was mentioned, when teachers finalize their attendance for the period, if a student's not there, a parent can get a push notification off of them instantly. When that happens with my kids, I text my kids, "Why aren't you in class? This must be in the state because I know you're not skipping classes. You know better." So that can happen instantly. So that will be our big push to remind our parents to use the app accordingly. We have parent accounts, we have schools with parent accounts at a 95% plus rate. So our parents largely have accounts. Some of our schools not quite there yet, but we'll have additional pushing for those schools as well. We also have the ability to automate phone calls at the end of each day. If a student has absences, we have the ability to automate calls to those parents in the phone numbers that we have on record, just to alert them, "Hey, your student missed class today, wanted to make you aware." And then maybe the big one at the bottom is the monthly attendance letters. This has been a big conversation for us.
And you've got to copy this so that you can see it in front of you.
Correct. The idea being that we have the ability to generate a monthly report, a monthly letter, if you will, to go to each student's family, showing where they're at, their attendance measured against the expected attendance rates that were mentioned, those 95% rates. And we can do that on an individual, personalized basis as an electronic letter that gets sent out. We can modify those. Obviously, we'll make those letters positive in nature, as positive as we can, in the idea that we want the students here. Here's where you're currently at in terms of our attendance rates compared to even the school, if we wanted to compare it to the school as a whole. We're likely looking at those scores as to the metric of what's acceptable attendance. So those are some of the things we're working on. I also look forward to finding other ways that we can leverage technology to make additional opportunities for our students and our families as well. We have a lot of data. To ensure that the data is accurate, the data is timely, all those sorts of things, from a technology perspective, we would love not to be more than to ensure that using this data, we mean it best. So.
Can I have a quick question?
Go ahead.
So way back when, when this first came out, or maybe it was, I don't know, it was before 2017, let's say, there was a gap in when the grades had to be put in. And you would see that perhaps, outside of my own four kids, that they might be struggling. And you would talk to them, they'd say, "Oh, grades aren't again." Okay. Then the grade wouldn't be there, then it would be boom, 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 it straggles on, and then you get busy with something else, you go back, and it's like, okay, where are the grades? Have we closed that gap so that it's not, it's not what it used to be? I understand why is that like that, but have we closed the gap so that the parent doesn't lose interest when they go on and they get the grading and everything?
Yeah. Sure. Oh, okay, sweet. So is the question more around, like, as far as teachers putting grades inside of the gradebook so parents can keep updated with the information?
That's one, but the bigger question is, is the user experience on the parent's side predictable enough that they trust it and they're going to seek for information rather than say, "If they're in there, I'm not going to look at it."
Yes, so yes, it is. So as far as the accuracy of the data, yes. Now, to the user experience, I think that's going to be dependent on which parent group you're talking to, right? As Chris had mentioned before, we have some who are really engaged a lot in the portal, right? And then there are other groups who aren't as engaged because they don't necessarily want to log in all the time, right? So there used to be, I think one of the features to your point is, there used to be grade notifications every time something happened, and that was super overwhelming to people. So that is no longer defaulted as a setting to on, so you, exactly, yes, correct. So you don't go in there and you see, "700 assignments were just submitted for my student, and I have no idea what that means, so I'm just not going to look at it." That is no longer defaulted on because of that, because you don't want to overwhelm somebody with, "I don't know what all this means, I just want to look at the grade." Does that make sense? Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Okay. So as what Dr. Lopez had talked about before, about what are kind of some of the things that we're doing as far as data reporting and staying, trying to stay on top of some of these issues, right? Is, we wanted to give, so Infinite Campus is a really great tool for a student information system, but some of the reporting areas are, they're great for looking at like one kid at a time for really, really big amounts of data in very simple ways. This can be a complex issue for a lot of reasons that Jessica talked about, and so we wanted to provide something that was a little more timely so that teams could be alerted and have kind of lists narrowed down to what students are we talking about? So this is just an example of some of the things that we're trying to provide them this year. So you have a daily alert system where our team staff, so the student services staff in each of the buildings, have the ability to get these lists the next day, so after the attendance has happened, and say, "I want to set my tardy threshold," or "I want to set my unexcused absence threshold." So you can set, right, greater than or equal to, and a less than or equal to, and the list will give you any student who crossed that threshold yesterday. So they basically don't have to wade through 1,900 records at their school. They can say, "Hey, here's my 50 kids," right? Or, "Here's my 60 kids that I need to look, and we're finding those kids today." The buildings have done an amazing job, I think, this year, going to, going to some of them and talking them through these things, helping them set them up. They have done a really great job of engaging with this and getting to those students. Like, they see this list of 60 kids, they're finding those kids during that day, they're trying to be proactive in how they're solving these issues. The one on the right then is an aggregate report. So this one looks at, this is, this gives those teams the ability to look back in time and see, what was a student's grade at a certain date? What was, what were the students' absences at a certain date, right? And then what are they now, right? So how is the student improving? Do we need to talk about this particular student because their grade has dropped a lot in this particular period of time, right? So it helps to kind of identify those kids a little bit faster than clicking through each kid in Infinite Campus. Then this one is a more kind of tier one look at where the buildings are, and the percentage here is going to be really small, but again, I want to give a lot of credit to the buildings and their staff about this year. This one looks at the attendance and absences of this particular view, the absence percentage each day of school, and it's a rolling total. So I think, I forget what this one, that is at here, 25. Okay, so this was day 25. So you can see 2024, that's this year, 2023 and 2022, and that shows you day 25 at the very end for each of those years, right? And so we can compare, where were we on the same day of school in the past? And so, right, on the 25th day this year, we had 6.16% of classes missed so far. And then if you look back to last year, that was 6.77. I know that 0.6% doesn't seem like a lot, but that's about 5,000 more kids that got to class. Like, that is super positive 25 days in the year, right? That is really awesome. There's, you can look back at 2022 and see, there's still some, maybe some work to do, but I think something that Dr. Lopez pointed out about, are we being better about taking attendance now? I think that factors in, and I also think that the change for the accountability of marking students absent who come nine, you know, after nine minutes, that in theory, this chart could have looked a lot worse this year, right? Because now you're making a substantial change to how, when those students are considered absent, but it looks better than last year. So again, I think that this is a really conservative way of saying we're doing really positive things here. Students are getting to class, and there's a lot of people involved in that.
And so as Dan shared, we have, we're very fortunate to be so data-rich, and our teams are working really hard to use that data to identify students who are struggling with attendance or other challenges and develop more individualized and targeted supports. So this is some of those supports that we have in place, and really, it does involve getting to know the student, to identify what are those barriers, and how can we create an individualized approach that really does address those root causes. And sometimes it also involves partnering within the community with community supports. And so we're really excited about the impact we've seen already with CareSalus, which we've only had for five months now, but our data is suggesting that it really is impacting our students and families and staff. We've already had 124 students or staff or family members getting connected through CareSalus. And again, this is the care coordination service that we can contact, and they set up services and create appointments and really navigate the whole system for individuals. Our recent data suggests that they're finding a provider match within less than one day for our families, and it's only been an average of 15 days until that first appointment, which is huge considering outside of this platform, the waitlist that we're seeing of up to several months, especially when looking for a bilingual or, you know, a specialized service. So this has been really huge too, in helping ensure that we have a wraparound services and that we're really meeting students' needs beyond school as well.
And finally, we just wanted to provide a high-level overview.
Who are you?
I am Director of Key Engagement and Outreach.
Thank you.
For adjustment, thank you for that reminder. I'm going to go there. And I'll say, finally, we're going to give a general overview of, just very high level, of the initial phase of our communications and some of the strategies and tactics. We worked very collaboratively with the buildings, teaching learning, Stephanie, Mark, Tony, and the comms team, to develop some of the pieces that we're going to show you this evening. So first off, just looking at, can you reverse that a couple of forms? But thank you very much. So first off, just taking a look at some of the key messages. "You belong, we care about you," and looking really at, "Attendance impacts school performance," and kind of the theme and variations on those messages. The primary audiences are our students, families, staff, and general community members. Some of the strategies and tactics that have been implemented thus far in this initial phase is really around visibility and awareness, the attendance posters, and you're going to see several of these developed throughout this school year and kind of reiterated, just a repeated messaging. Developing some email templates for teachers, the school newsletters, messaging from school leaders, individualized nudge letters, social media messaging, we'll start to ramp up, and then what Chris talked about, leveraging our technology with Infinite Campus Portal and specifically the mobile app to try and get a larger adoption rate. When you see, go by the schools, some of the fencing, you'll see some of these banners as well as inside, it's been customized with preferences of the schools, and they're printed in-house with our district production services. As well as the posters, click again, sir, thank you very much, have the three general themes, and each of you kind of have a different one in front of you from a school, just so that you can see. You know, focusing on fewer than five times essentially missing class, attend today, achieve tomorrow, those are customized with images from each of the schools. And then, can you go back one? Okay. And then here's just an example of some of the locations within, inside and outside of the school, that you can see this is starting to be implemented. And that's just a very high-level overview of communications strategies and tactics. And that, Lopez?
When Dr. Lo and I were doing our coffee and bagels heading to the schools, I noticed these posters all over, and if board members noticed today when we were, our specialized tour, these were also all over the place. So, yeah, very noticeable. Thank you.
I think it's important to repeat a message. I want to just end on this thought that setting foot on the school campus is really an act of hope for a student. A student, when they come into our schools, sometimes they don't, a student, they don't feel like they have a future, whether their economic realities, their language challenges, they have mental health issues. And we have a lot of students that have been experiencing those, that, of course, we know what Sergeant General said about the condition of our teens. And so part of, part of what we're talking about, all of these issues, it really is about inspiring hope, that there's, our students see that they have a future, and that in part, what we've invested in for the last decade to show them how they can engage and not only get support and get help that they may need to overcome any kind of personal challenges they may have, but for them to see themselves and seeing the value of what they're doing today, that's going to help them tomorrow. And it is a difficult concept for a student to experience, particularly if you don't think that you may, you may have, that you can see beyond sort of your current experience and what you have in front of you. That is why the investments that we've done in our facilities and in these pathway programs really do have an impact in bringing that hope and inspiration to students so that they want to be here and they want to be with us.
Good question. So I know we're, we're doing, you know, five days and everything, but we're not seeing the flip side of this, and I'm sure it's there that, you know, hey, you've been in school for 25 days in a row. Is that happening also?
That is the intent of the, of the letter, that, sort of like your comment, the design of the letter was really about, we get those comment letters, they're your, you're spending X amount compared to your neighbor's, or... So one of the things that we learned from EAB, and Dr. Lo could speak to this, I know he attended one of the sessions, was just the importance of sort of positive messaging and not telling kids that, "Hey, you're not coming to school, you have to say, 'Hey, how can we help you?'" I think that's where, you know, when Dr. Lopez mentioned earlier, the underutilized influence of the teacher is when the student has that asset and returns, reminding and empowering our teachers to walk in the back, "I missed you yesterday, I'm really glad that you're here today." Just subtle little acts like that and of encouragement, it sticks with you, makes that pop in your mind. Or like, as you said, "You've spent like three weeks, you've been here every day, I'm really proud of you, I love seeing you every..."
proud of you, I love seeing you every day, things like that, really make a difference.
Yes.
Well, as you guys were going through this, a new message of hope, which I really appreciate, it strikes me that students, when we give them clear-cut expectations, and we remember that their children and children thrive with guidelines, and the feeling that adults are sort of around and looking for them and looking out for them, and maybe some of those anxieties or those feelings of being alone, if we're looking at them more, if we're saying, hey, you're here, you know, maybe some of that will be alleviated, and we'll have a little mental health pickup as well.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Rowe?
First of all, I want to thank you, Dr. Lopez, and all the presenters today. This is really powerful and important information. I know that we had a workshop this summer, that the admin was there, that the DHSWs, a lot of comprehensive work went into this, and I, I look at the numbers, and we're obviously making progress, it's great, I know there's more to go, but I think you're headed in the right direction. I know that there was a, first of all, the messaging that went out through all the schools, I thought was really also impactful, so that parents see that firsthand, a reminder, yes, get them in the school. The students obviously see the posters, great graphics, Tony, outstanding, see those banners on campuses. There was work, seminar session earlier this month also, that reemphasized this. At that time, and with, my only question is, I always worry about technology, I think this is super, I'm really hoping that I don't have to call in like six finals, that I can actually just submit those electronically this year? Yes, all right. But for those of us who may not be Aztec savvy, and what I do worry about when it comes to equity, some of the families who, you know, their parents are working different hours, and will there be a tool or maybe a YouTube video or something to make sure, I know the email's coming out tomorrow, to walk them through, because those might be the families that we really want to reach?
I certainly think it's a collective effort, I'm sure the principals can probably speak to how they have a lot of parent engagement. And I imagine Chris, from a technology perspective, who's got a lot of experience, but we designed sort of step-by-step guides or YouTube videos, I don't know what Chris is being planning there for a parent engagement for with the app. And I'm sure the principals have lots of parent events where they could incorporate the use of the mobile app, take attendance, since it's going to be a new thing, particularly with freshman families.
Yeah, or something to even put on the docket next year when they come to open house or something. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Mr. Carrion?
I want to go with Alvin, I guess, about the presentation, it was very impressive. I got a taste of it at Open House. Shout out to Dr. McFaul and Pat Gro, they presented it at Open House. And being that I was among a lot of people who had their first kid coming into Hursi, they liked, really liked that presentation. They really said a lot about what, you know, they could expect at high school level, that, you know, missing class is maybe not as big a deal in middle school, maybe it should be, but it's not. In high school, it's a whole different animal, and they need to show up. One thing about the presentation that I think was understated is that I heard so many times from teachers that you can't teach in an empty chair. And I think that's the one thing that in the presentation that maybe a little bit understated is that you just think about the teachers and what it'd be like for them. Because you know, you know damn well that they're frustrated when kids are not showing up, and now all of a sudden you got kids that are showing up. And it does make a difference. I mean, if you're a great teacher, and we have many great teachers, the fact that you have your kids in class consistently, it's got to make you up your volume, just like it does with the students. So once again, thank you very much, it was really impressive.
Could you talk just a little bit about the effect of the block schedule? Because if I skip a class three times on a block schedule, that's the same as missing six on a straight eight, and now I'm over five.
Yes, I mean, there are lots of positives with the block schedule, and I can certainly illustrate those. One of the challenges is particularly for those weeks when you're only meeting two days in that week, if you miss one of them, you're only in class one day that week, or if you happen to miss both, that is a significant loss of instructional time. And that is one of the challenges of that EB block, of two days, one week, three days the next week. And one of the things that I'm sure will be looked at in the working room.
From a technical perspective, just to your point, the way that I've done the, sorry, the way that I've done the calculation was to account for that. So the five absences that we're looking at is under our current block schedule, that's why it's about 10%, right? So back when we were looking previously, it was more like nine absences back then. It's about, that 10% number is actually really, that's why the national data says it, it holds pretty true for us. So I tried to account for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Dr. Rowe?
Thank you, Dr. Lopez. I just wanted to, you know, thank all of our presenters tonight, and really recap the evening before we move on to action. You know, to Ms. Norris and your team, thanks very much. We had to see an updated specialized schools, one of our, you know, continued celebration and challenge of a very, very new school, if you think about it. You had programs that have been longstanding in the district that have been fragmented throughout this building and throughout the district. Really coming into your own, it was really wonderful to see some of the counts, you know, the orders that we walked through, the pride in this development in specialized. So well done, thank you very much for opening the doors to us. Mr. Yuli and team, that project has been a year in the making, and is a district that is steeped in tradition, is a lot of work to be done, and that shouldn't be viewed as a negative. That's, we're focused on the right things to ensure that we're taking care of our buildings and ensuring our students are going to be in a place that is safe and nurturing for their learning. And Dr. Lopez and all of our presenters, it was a wonderful presentation, and one of the greatest challenges facing us in this time, in this day and age. And the entire evening gave me great pride as a newcomer to the district, that we've been able to tackle some of the biggest things that we need to, and we're tackling them head on, and we're doing this with a really high level. We're laying the groundwork for some, for really strong success. I'm really proud of all of you and grateful for the work that you put into this evening. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to put you on the spot, Mr. Carrion. We're going through the specialized school, and he goes, wow. Right, right, wow.
Yeah. No, I hadn't seen it before. I'm a newbie. I didn't get any indication where I had to go and find my way through the building like a Halloween corneary, but I was.
We'll take you on a tour when I was a little younger.
It was really, yeah, it was really impressive. It really.
It really is. And you said, like, most people don't see this. They don't. Most people, you know, you're in a comprehensive high school, you don't see what's going on over at the specialized school. But anyway, okay. So we do have three action items, folks. So 7.1, approval of counts payable, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, Palmer. Aye. Heineman.
Aye.
Desling.
Yes.
Carrion.
Yes.
Rock.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Cortzer. Aye.
Seven zero.
Thank you. 7.2, approval of personal transaction report, motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Call the roll, Walker.
Yes.
Rock.
Aye.
Desling.
Yes.
Carrion.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
And Cortzer. Aye. Motion carries, seven zero. 7.3, approval of memo of understanding, motion, please.
So moved.
And a second. Second, Dr. Rowe.
All right, so the district was faced with an interesting challenge that has come up, and we've all experienced and expect to experience insurance increases. However, in recent years, the district was fortunate enough to remain pretty flat and even solve the increases over the years. And this year, that kind of caught up with us. We saw an 11% increase in our insurance coverage. And what this memo represents is a contract with our, with our employees that was living in the age where those increases weren't occurring, and we were used to those flat changes. And that, that increase realized that we, employees and district board shared the first 3% of that increase, and beyond that 3% was on the backs of the employees. Well, seeing 11% increase was wiping out some of the, and actually was over the increases that some of our employees were realizing with their annual increase as part of their contract. So kudos to Mr. Kraft and Mr. Keely and our insurance committee, put a lot of work in on not only discussing this, but they went back and looked at our, at our insurance premiums, and the head of open enrollment have made some adjustments that we're planning to bring forward that will not only counteract and reduce that 11% to make it a little bit more palatable, but we as a district felt that we needed to lead our employees in the middle and share that, share that increase so that they, they didn't have to bear that burden all on their own. Mr. Dawson, you sat on the insurance committee, I don't know if you have additional comments?
Well, it was, you're correct. On a year-to-year basis, if that's how you're going to look at insurance, eventually you're going to get in trouble. You may be all right for a couple of years, but you've got to look at it over a period of time. Three to five years is probably a better way to look at it. You're going to have ups and downs during that period of time, but if you've got it strategized right, you can sell that. You can sell that to yourself, and you can sell it to the employees. In this case, 50% of whatever that increase might have been, and the way it was set up, at 3% before, 3% was set up so that half of that 3% of the one-up cost was shared by the district and employees. Anything above 3% was employees' cost. It got so ridiculously high because of coming out of COVID and a whole bunch of other things, and the uses of the insurance, that it was not, it was not equitable to have that all directly charged to the employees. So the district and the financial people worked at it very hard and came up with a reasonable solution, and that being to share 50% with the employees, anything above that 3%, which allowed the whole process to move forward with much less of an increase going forward, actually reduced it down probably in half of what it would have been with the 11%. So yes, the committee, committee did good work, but really it was the financial people, and certainly CaliJanis does a great job keeping the committee going in the right direction. I've been dragged in on the committee all these years primarily because all the people that are on the committee, from whatever organization they're with, are focused on what they can do the best for healthcare-wise, for the employees that they're there representing, the representative population, the food service people, and that's really, that's really what it's all about. Nobody's trying to get to the point where the district is, and we aren't going to make money on it, we're self-insured anyway, but getting to the point, it's, medical expenses, as we all know, are expensive nowadays, and we're trying to keep that at a minimum for everybody to keep it equitable.
The other additional comments I would like to mention is to thank you to our collective bargaining units, I mean, ASP and CMA for collaboration. Yeah. Appreciate this, and we appreciate, appreciate them all.
Okay, Danny, under, okay, call the roll. Desling.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Carrion.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Cortzer.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. And once again, thank you to the tour from the specialized school, the master facilities presentation, and insuranceee and absenteeism presentation, appreciated. We haven't gone this long in a while. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Oh, Mr. Dawson.
Maybe I'm going to work on that BG expense. I'll bring that to you next meeting.
Thank you, Bill. Hey, shout out to our principals, thank you for coming.
Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll. Carrion.
Yes.
Palmer.
Aye.
Desling.
Yes.
Heineman.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Walker.
Yes.
And Cortzer.
Aye. Thank you.